Prosperity, Lord, that our community would be united together and that we would glorify you in the way that we act. Father, we pray for our neighborhoods, Lord, that you might work within them. Father, that you would solve the problems that we have. Lord, we love you because you first loved us, and it is in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Good evening, good evening, good night, and we have today some Americans and in due time, Father, for what we're saying, long nation, under God, in the Bible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank the public speaking, as I stated before, we appreciate the volunteer participants coming and please come back again. I might be wrong with everyone, too, but I'm, um, all the fathers have a great Father's Day, um, this past weekend, and, um, I'd like to announce, too, that our next, um, our next meeting is, um, July the, excuse me, I'm hung up. Our next meeting is a workshop and it's Tuesday, June the twenty fifth at sixteen p.m., then our next regular meeting is July the eighth at sixteen p.m., and then also, just for your information, we have budget workshops coming up, and we have like Tuesday, July the sixteenth, Thursday, July the eighteenth, Monday, July the twenty second, Thursday, July the twenty fifth, and they all begin at nine a.m. Approval of the agenda. I've been asked to remove item number nine from this agenda. Are there any other items to be deleted, added, changed, or anything else?
Yeah.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, yes.
A motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Johnson, we'll discuss it. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor.
Workshop again, when is it?
The workshop?
Play the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
Tuesday, July the sixteenth.
Seven sixteen.
And Thursday, July the eighteenth.
At seven eighteen.
July the eighteenth.
Seven, alright.
Uh, Monday, July the twenty second, seven twenty two, and Thursday, July the twenty fifth, seven twenty five, and they all begin at nine a.m.
Okay.
Um, moving on to, uh, business and public hearing, number four, the board should receive R and P for construction, engineering, and inspection services for the competitiveness and employment by RIL, C E B Y R project grant set for this date at nine a.m., are assumed thereafter as possible. Okay, I'd like to use a, um, list, we only got one proposal, getting from Martin's Consulting, we got some deals there. And the business meeting would be Melody Cox, myself, and Danny Dixie. Okay, the one thing that, um, when I was reading over the package, under the statement of issue in the board package, it states, recommendation on award or recommendation of spending time for presentations for pub- for public, publicings to be made to the board at the July the first meeting, it should be, uh, July the eighth time. That's it, you're trying to get a copy. Sorry, I'm late. Uh, thank you. Copy's not on a dollar amount. Do you want it for dollar amount? July the, uh, nine, two, three.
Apparently we're not asking for a presentation here. We negotiated, um, one, he's only got one proposal, still needs to negotiate, and he's not coming back to the presentation in the end.
Go ask for some copies, if they got two on the board, can you do it around these guys and those guys? Yes, yeah, for, um, gentlemen, uh, the papers, first line, uh, is one original and two copies and then five copies in the other until you got there.
One piece doing that, if I may, um, from number ten, there is a resolution in number ten, you might want to, um, look at it in half.
Can't get an authorization, no resolution, for the chairman to sign on behalf of the board for supplemental agreement for the January cycle.
What do we?
So now, I mean.
Well, what you can do is you can just ask the new commissioner, I am, and ask for, you know, ask for, um, me to read it, read it, uh, while we.
They have presented a proposal for a six, that's the contract, and that amount is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay, so the business meeting will take it and I'll come back at the next meeting with a recommendation. Number five, the board has a home research of two public and students set for this date at nine o'clock a.m. are assumed thereafter as possible to receive public input and know by the public of the possible grant application to the Florida Department of Parks and Recreation, Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one funding cycle, which contains funding assistance for additional improvements to the Taylor County Sports Complex. Welcome back, I am Kathy C. T. We're happy to see you, too, thank you, thank you, I'm very excited to meet you, um, I get off of my shit sometimes, it's just always, um, um, we, just to give you a brief update, um, the startup funding cycle will be opening here in a couple months to commit the grant, we have just been eligible the last few years to apply because the maximum allowable grant we can have is three, and we have three of those, we have the sports complex, we have the, um, we've been applying in public part that great, and all of those are closed down, so this year we're eligible to apply for two. And they have two types of money that you can apply for, one for maximum project of two hundred thousand dollars, and the other one fifty thousand and under, and you can apply for, um, I, one of those options, you can use two hundred thousand, or one two hundred, and one fifty thousand, however you choose to do it. I, um, recommend, and we can use two two hundred thousand if you want, but there are many years the legislature only funds the fifty thousand dollar grant, so during your planning, um, process, two thousand is in mind. Um, this project has been isolated because we have identified it principally in your capital improvement plan, and then the staff involved in the sports complex, um, have given the budget for improvements that they needed out there, so we went ahead and scheduled, um, a public hearing for this, if you would like to do forward. Just because you're having a public hearing does not mean this has to be one of your projects. Um, the application process is fairly lengthy, um, and if you want to get through, we need to be identifying projects that you would like to do forward with, and we're going to discuss general later in the agenda, but we, the sports complex has been identified, a project that we submit, the startup has to be included in your capital improvement plan, so keep that in mind when you adopt it, that these projects have to be in there. On, um, the project, we can reflect the waiver of NAC, um, which we're ready to use, so we do not have to provide, um, a, a NAC, it's just keeping money to go of your budget, they're not going to pay for that. Um, I will let the sports complex people come up with, uh, and buy one year, um, but that, that's why that project has been identified. Each application requires two public hearings, and if you do a public workshop, or if, um, like say the, you have a two craft, that can, uh, count as one of your needs for the sports complex. So it is, it is a bit lengthy, it's a very competitive grant process, and one point can make a difference. Um, we've heard, I believe, the junior general, Miss Scott, who's part of how you get points on this grant, and we always try to make sure for your project elements, we get the maximum points, because there's a lot of areas that we lose points that are beyond our control. We usually do not have a coordination of the partner, if I'm part of it, we lose points there. Um, our projects are not already connected to a state financial trail, um, we lose points on that, because it's a different purpose. A lot of areas that's beyond our control, so we always try to get the maximum number of points, but we do have to.
Well, right.
So I will turn it over to Gary, and I can.
Uh, some of the areas we looked at in the past and everything, uh, on the grant, uh, some of our infrastructure, we need to upgrade, stuff like that, but also, we look at, uh, new softball field in Kansas City, I think they're on it, and they're quite pricey, uh, they're like four hundred thousand.
Four thousand and a half, four hundred thousand per field.
Per field. We set up for two of them, but kind of way out there. We also look at fashion cages, uh, I think we're doing one this year, and we probably need six or seven, so that might be an area to look at. Um, we first, the walking trail could be one of them, uh.
The visual lighting of the walking trail.
Right.
And that would be more for security, than to encourage people to walk it in the evening.
In the off, in the fall, it gets darker a little later, and that's one of the areas they come to me about, that the lighting on the drive we need to look at.
The walkers, are they, are they open from dusk to dawn?
They're open, uh, from seven to ten.
You think these walkers start early?
Mm, I don't know.
So there's different times for different cars?
Yeah, I guess.
We'll have to look at that. Um, if, I, I know that the gates are shut, um, by, you know, later on during the evening, I don't know how late the games go.
They will run, we've been there till nine, nine thirty sometimes.
Okay, I, I, we can, we can discuss that later, but, um, I, I was thinking that all parks should be shut to dawn, but I know on, on game night, we want some people open, but I'd like to discuss that in another meeting, to have all the parks being this time.
And, and there's some other areas, like we've got three bridges, not over the river, but over the, like the ditch and stuff like that, they need to be rebuilt, so there's a lot of areas, and I'm going to sit down on Melody and go over the points system, see what areas we can, and what we, in the past, we've done exercise, playgrounds, halls, plants, and stuff like that, so there's a lot of areas that maybe we can use a little bit.
Well, and so you know, with us, and the life of care, the being of single two hundred thousand dollar grant includes, uh, playground day coverage, which is two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know, because you're saying fifty?
Yep.
Per, per playground, or both of them combined?
One.
One, okay.
And Gary, if I can intercept for a moment, I know in discussions with, um, with Greg yesterday, Greg Mullins, our recreation coordinator, he did state that one of the assignments he was given was to, um, was to determine whether or not we could draw in, um, tournaments, and he told me yesterday that every time he had a discussion with a travel ball team, one of their first questions is, how many batting cages do you have? Um, and he felt like that was an important element, we are going to, um, attempt to have more tournaments at the sports complex. Right, and, you know, but you and I talked last week about that, um, for me, as one commissioner, I'm very interested in what does it take out there for him to bring in tournaments, because that's been something that's for almost ten years, that, you know, I've had it multiple times, and we have probably the most beautiful sports complex that I, that I know of, and, uh, it's very important that we have tournaments scheduled for many reasons, um, the economy here and, and entertainment and, and so forth. So for me, I'm more interested in what does it take to give us ready for tournaments? The lighting and the resupplying, if, if we change the parks from dusk to dawn, that won't be an issue. But for me, I'd be very interested in the batting cages, so that obviously is one that is, is going to identify the helping tournaments, and, um, generally, I'm always concerned about the playground equipment being too hot and children being burned and not being able to use it, so from me, those are the only two that I would be interested in right now, with that other project that we're going to identify later, um, probably not today, but soon, and so I'd like to see some of the grant money put to some other projects possibly, but, but I mean, we'll be here for, well, for a long, here, this is a public hearing, so when you're done.
I'm done.
Okay, okay, so it is a public hearing, so we need one from the public that would like to come forward and speak, on the case, we can make them forward now. Okay, if not, then, um, we'll pause the public hearing.
If you want to have some, just speak, I, I, I.
I'm doing that, I'm, I'm, yeah, for the connection.
That's, well, I tell you what, I've been getting with, uh, kind of, I heard they're talking about a lot of state companies, and, uh, I know that there are several communities out, specifically, Oakville, one, three in Dallas, they've said they have a private center, uh, private centers, uh, people within the city of Nassau County, the one, for different things, for paper cards, pure rain, how to swim, and this type of stuff. Uh, I would head with it, I told my brain crew, the county commission, and we had a budget workshop, we want to bring it back in before, that's about, little girl that voted for me in about twelve years old, and I think we missed it here, she and Megan maybe sitting in the county building together, trying to get a grant, they're doing it together, so I will be ready to practice with them.
Anything that's been tight, wanting to do, and we set up a specific, uh, what do you call them, conference, professional conference, to supplement our current, at base, so I think we need to concentrate on that before we go into the business.
And that's exactly what I am, you know, in terms of the sports complex, is what we're talking about, I think that, uh, I agree with that voter that says what, um, tournament finish, I believe.
I'm trying to, of course, about improvements for the guns, that's manned down, then getting that done first, and then it left, there's something bad along with, uh, the research of the walking trail, could be down, be on the back burner, you know, and, uh, the bridges, they could be repaired if the boat was hit bad in one of those for right now, you know, but I'd love to, um, for.
Right, right, I, I think we all agree on, on that, and, um, so there will be another, a public hearing on the same topic, and, um, we'll, we'll discuss it again at that time. What we had prepared in, uh, a tennis pitch package to get the maximum points was, the focus was on the playground day coverage, which is a big effort to grant fifty thousand, and the batting cages, um, we thought if we could do one quad, uh, of four, so that you have that completed out for tournaments, that came in over four thousand dollars. So the main part, that was the big chunk of your, um, grant applications, and, and what I prepared, it doesn't mean you have to do it. To get the points that you need in for that category, we added in, like, um, partial trail researches and, and security lighting, and a couple pieces of outdoor, um, um, fitness equipment, because that's not the maximum number of points that you did, but it gave you all the money that you needed to accomplish, um, to, to get the, the block of the money that you need. So, so what is on the map? Yeah. Has to be done exclusively as a sports complex to get points. Yes, yes, to get these points, all the projects. Two hundred thousand or, or two hundred thousand, I think, has to be spent at the sports complex. And that's the way it is with all the grants, it has to be spent at, you take a site specific, and that's why your public hearing today, that's sports complex, because your grant, your, your public hearings and your public workshops have to identify the project where all that money will be used. Well, that's the main thing. So we couldn't identify, just think about the box, we couldn't have identified another, somebody, somebody put this on the agenda about the sports complex, I don't think it was a commissioner, so somebody decided that they wanted to do the sports complex, was that true? It was, in general staff discussion, it, it was like, not, not me in particular, but once it was identified by the board in the capital improvement plan, it would relate to me, we involved, applied to the grant. There were several needs identified during the strategic planning, that there was a long list, definitely presented for the sports complex, so our goal was to identify a funding source for those needs that were identified during the strategic, strategic planning system, not to, not to get ahead of a commissioner or try to step out on our own, and I apologize if it appears that way, that was not the intention. My understanding of the needs that were identified were shade covers and for, for, to identify a way to promote, um, promote our sports complex. But I think what Melody is trying to say is that for one, for an application to be successful, you have to maximize your points, and our request is, if the board wishes for us to move forward with an application for the sports complex completely or dispossessed, I think we need an idea of how large of a project we need to submit a grant application for. We have two opportunities, two different for that grant application. The maximum for each is two hundred thousand dollars, but we have had success with smaller projects, and typically the legislature will fund a project that is fifty thousand dollars. So the direction that we're asking for is, do we need to submit two different projects for two hundred thousand dollars, or do we need to submit one for two hundred thousand dollars and one for fifty thousand dollars? And the budget that Melody came up with was just if the board wishes to submit an application for a large project. Now, since you can choose for us, just you submit an application for shade covers and not be a fifty thousand dollar project. I don't know if that helps clarify what staffing that was, was just to find funding for needs that were identified earlier. Yeah, well, I think we all agree about the batting cages and being covered, but, um, I, if we get on into the agenda, there will be other things that we may discuss and, uh, at some point in time, and maybe not today, we need to have a list of things that we, each commissioner, I'm sure, has a list of projects that they would like to see done, and, uh, so I just didn't know, it, it seems like, uh, that we're trying to, to fit everything into the maximum amount of a grant possible, and it obviously has to be in one location, so you choose that one location, and then you try to, then you try to maximize that, so. Correct. Any other projects that any of us have would have to have other sources of funding, right, other than this, unless we change this to another project, am I correct? Right, you can, I, I can understand, any project you want, it's just site specific, like. I understand. Yeah, it's site specific, and the money can only be used at that site, and we historically will add, like, if you only do, um, your playground and your baseball field, you get eleven points. But if you throw in, we're going to plant three native trees, you're going to have six points, and you can do that for five hundred dollars to get your hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we don't give a risk of priority points on what we need to do at a mental price to get you your big money. Right, and I thank you for helping me understand that better, uh, but this is a public hearing, we have another one, and we have other things on the agenda for paying to get it. Right, so we, so I, we are the ones that see and want to, or with a second public hearing, or a possible grant at grant for a sports complex, right? Yes. Okay, and that doesn't, and. It doesn't count for anything. It does not, just because you have the public hearing, it, it doesn't count for anything, and so you submit an actual grant application. So this is part of the formal process required, that's the argument, certainly. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, consent items, um.
I appreciate you going through the effort, trying to get us to understand that project. Nothing better than doing this.
Well, I want you to understand, because for now, it is a wonderful program to, for like, communities like that.
Yeah.
It's the only way we can find these projects, and, you know, you know, we have so much because of for now, but it is a confusing and time consuming process. But, but the great part is, once you process, we can get the money with no matter what.
We do.
We got a straight hand. Um, consent items are six through eleven, but we, um, are going to remove item number ten, so it'll be six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven. Is there a motion to, you can do the number. Oh, yeah, most, little, right, it's number nine, um, all except number nine, and then number ten.
You don't think those two are?
Yeah, but the number ten, we have to read the resolution.
Yeah, okay.
I'll turn it to.
Oh, I'll move, with, uh, the resolution.
Okay.
Six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight, and eleven. Is there a motion for their? Motion by Commissioner, yeah, stand, by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries. Item number ten, the board can consider to local agency program supplemental agreement number one, to construct a sidewalk along Green Street and to consider the option of a resolution authorizing the chairperson to accept such agreement on behalf of the commission as offended by Kenneth Dudley, county engineer. Is there a motion to read the resolution, I'll tie along.
I'm in agreement.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Jim, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries.
Green Street sidewalk supplemental agreement number one, speaking to office.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion, to adopt.
Okay, now, motion?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Jim, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All in favor, same time, motion carries. Public request number twelve, U Thomas, one of the little water management district, will appear to provide a brief overview of the district and presentation of payment in lieu of tax. Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah.
We aren't, we're not. I do have, so if anything else comes out of this, like, you have your money. Um, now to share, everybody in the board, I hate Kelly, I'm obviously not our executive director, U Thomas, uh, he is out of town this week, at a conference, there's a sentence for cars, but was obviously unable to make it today. And I wanted to give you a brief overview of what's going on in our district, some of our major initiatives and projects are working on with the county, and then I'm going to turn it over to Amy Brown, who covers the remainder, um, of our prosecution as it relates to our supply chain, so if that's okay, I'll, I'll come ahead and. Um, oh, please. Uh, to fly over water management district encompasses nearly eight thousand miles, um, of north.
Uh, supplying of the water management district encompasses nearly eight thousand miles, um, of northern Florida. We have about all our parts of fifteen counties across that region, thirteen river masons, and a population of nearly three hundred and forty thousand. Per Florida statute, we have been tasked or charged with four areas of responsibility. Their water supplies, uh, water quality, water management, and natural system restoration. Uh, some major initiatives that the district is working on, I know, um, this county in particular is probably fairly familiar with our river cost share program. It's regional initiatives, valuing environmental resources program that we have. Um, we also have several agricultural cost share programs to be worked with minimum exposure levels. I believe in this area, we have, uh, commenced rulemaking for the Seanhappy MSL, as it relates to, to the Seanhappy River. Um, and currently, I don't know whether it is in a rulemaking process, but it is making us require, um, for, an explorer program. We also supported a water quality initiative, that includes working with the Department of Environmental Protection on specific sewer projects. Um, they are kind of the keeper of that, and we've helped them with our county state assistance and, and contacting them and whatnot. Um, we also have a lot of advanced technology, uh, ag technology projects, and, uh, Amy's gonna follow up in a little bit about the western region water supply planning. Um, that's another major charge for our district currently. Um, as I mentioned with the river projects, here's a list of them, as you can see at the top half. Um, these projects are currently complete, and I do not believe that you guys have anything that helps with us currently. We do have one ongoing ag cost share program with one producer in this area, and as you can tell, it's going to, uh, estimated to conserve about point zero zero five million gallons per day of water. Um, here is our Seema flood map data, which is kind of a generic slide, um, but the district does work with Seema to do, um, assessment for flood insurance. Um, obviously Taylor County and, you know, Lori and, um, Ethan Seema Seenhappy basis. The two thousand twelve grant that we received with Seema, I believe is complete at a hundred percent. And the two, the twenty nineteen grant that we just received is estimated to be complete by twenty twenty-four. What we threw is the coastal portion of the district, um, in this assessment, because it was easier for us to include that while we were already continuing our efforts to offer counties. Here is a map of our groundwater conditions for May, obviously in the past couple of weeks, that's probably changed a little bit, depending on the presentation. Um, but we do, um, get down the data from our offshore wells, um, around newer county, and that, that's how this slide is created. Um, but I think when this was made, the groundwater levels have returned to a pretty normal range. I think earlier this year, they might have been a little high, um, but currently, uh, whatever from the slide was made, things were, were, were pretty normal. This last slide that I have, is our river gate slide, um, this depicts a river flow on the Seenhappy River, which is north of February nineteen, um, spring. At the end of May, the flows were very low, which is not surprising considering the low amount of rainfall that we experienced throughout the past few months. Um, and earlier this year, at the beginning of June, it was June, April, night, a river in its headwaters had over ten inches of rain, which caused the water level to increase over six feet during that beginning of July. So, I'm sure that has also increased slightly since this, this map was made, um, so we are monitoring that for future, um, flooding concerns. So, with that, I will play it over to Amy.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Amy Brown, and I'm in the water supply planning section, are charged in water supply planning to make sure there's sufficient water to use projected growth and sustain natural systems. That's what we're working with. Um, okay. That goes on. Oh, yeah, that's a good question. Okay, so, uh, our mostly planned water supply assessment was accepted by our governing board in, uh, the summers last year, in twenty eighteen. We were looking at the planning horizon from twenty fifteen and twenty thirty-five, and as a result of that planning, there were some recommendations that happened. The first one was that we recommended that we kind of split the district in terms of how we do planning. So, we'll have a eastern planning region, which is kind of the white green you see there. That's a part of the district where we did plan, and joined with Saint John through the water management district, and we're already in a water supply planning process with them. And so, that's the rest of the district, the western portion, which handled separately, just so we wouldn't have to coordinate with Saint John across the, the flowing river divide there. Within the western planning region, there was a portion of the western planning region, which is the Hatcher, as you can see on the map there, that portions of Madison, Taylor, Wausau, and sixteen Doby counties. Those portions, there was a recommendation that we did the regional planning, and that was to make sure that there's sufficient water supplies to meet projected growth and sustain natural systems. The reason that that divide is drawn very use, which is kind of, you know, cutting through some of the different county boundaries, is it's drawn basically along the, the ten meter divide, the groundwater divide, between the water that flows towards the flowing river and the water that flows toward the coastal system. So, at this point, we're focusing on making sure there's sufficient water in the flowing river basin based on projected growth, hopefully in our district, and of the region. The business water use for the district as a whole, it's about two hundred and fifty-three million gallons per day of, of use, so we estimate in twenty fifteen, the water slide, you can see that about one hundred and thirty-six million gallons per day of that was agricultural water use. So, by move forward to the next slide, you see the use in this county is very different, and the projections in terms of growth, different from water demand are very different for this town. The slide forward, so you can see the water use in Taylor County, you know, the, the big water use that we have is our industrial user use, and that, you know, the, you can tell you're a folding plant. Their water use in terms of, okay, they're sort of trended actually declining, so they become more efficient in terms of water use. You can contrast that with most of our other counties that are looking at more of agricultural demand and agricultural growth. And so, in those portions of the district, we're looking at about forty percent growth in projected agricultural irrigation that is driving and increasing water demand. So, while the demands in Taylor County specifically are relatively flat, for the district as a whole, we're looking at water growth that's mainly due to the agricultural sector. And so, on the right hand side, you can see the irrigated acreage in Taylor County, that's being estimated for by the, or the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, towards below a thousand irrigated acres. And you can contrast that with other, for instance, twenty, twenty to thirty thousand acres. Uh, agricultural irrigated acreage is less than one percent of the water use in Taylor County. Okay, so, then in terms of just, so that keeps going forward, there will be a recommendation of growth for the D I, governing board, for the flowing water management district, to designate the Hatcher, because I thought that during the map, as a water resource caution area. What that means is that that's an area where, again, we're gonna be prioritizing for projects. If there was a water treatment facility that's within those boundaries, they have to consider water, safety use of their, their wastewater, make sure it's being used as efficiently as possible. That's not putting there any municipalities in, in Taylor County that was impacted by, but even were it to be here, there's already reuse happening, so, so, you claim water has been sent to the folding plant, some of it's very, kind of a spray deal, also because it's retarding apple fruit, it's considered as the usual. Like, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm happy to, to sit down with anybody in more detail in terms of why you estimate it for the county, or how we're doing that. Going forward, we'll be talking to the county, reaching out again, and we look at projections going forward.
Any questions?
How do you think the amount of water is only using in season? I mean, what, what, how do you figure that stay up to one of those?
Right, so for large industrial use, we'll actually reach out directly to them to see if they're, if they're looking at a, at a flat throat or ability to bring in new water demand. So, for large industrial use, we'll be reaching out to them individually. In terms of population, we're using a Euroeconomic Research, uh, at the University of Florida, does population projections by county throughout the state of Florida. And we're looking at those projections in general to kind of get a guide of how many people they're saying are gonna be coming into this area. So, some water uses per person, right? You know, most people, you have more demand, industrial a little bit different, and then for agriculture, we're working with the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, we're looking at economics, we're looking at what types of crops are being grown, what types of demand going forward. They're actually projecting where they think new agricultural growth will be occurring. So, there's some lot of growth projected for Taylor County, but in terms of scale, most of the, most of the type of things that are grown here are not irrigated acres, agriculture is not irrigated.
Well, I, I, I have a good idea, uh, well, Paul's Forest Capital Hall, two of the current projects, and I'm really glad we're able to talk to you about that.
The, the, the two projects under the Florida.
Forest Capital Hall, two of them. I don't know.
I think it's on the first one, I said, Taylor, you, Lori, that's your chat.
We took, excuse me, in, under that river cost, or in the river share program, we took the existing, um, on-site stewardship tank and system, abandoned those, and connected up to the city stewardship.
I remember doing that, getting my degree from this one, what they had to do with.
We, we, they come.
I have to say.
Yes, I, I'm thinking, uh, I'm in the project, you work?
River grant.
Oh, okay.
I have lots of good ones.
And I was gonna.
Yeah, well, and that's the same with all of those on that slide, um, we, we cost care those, which we have, so.
And we actually do have an application in with them, um, we provided, we responded to one R A I, and I was gonna ask, um, do you have an idea of when funding determination is on the, um, if it is decided for that program this year?
As river as old?
The river cycle for this year?
Yeah, I don't know, um.
I know that's.
I've been waiting for this, six years.
I'm involved in this, hey, but if, if a reprocess is happening right now, I can get Ted Roseberry to circle back in terms of the dates for when that would be done, but there are needs ongoing right now.
Yeah, we, we, like I said, we responded to one R A I after our initial permission, I was just curious of when we think it would be, when it's on the, um.
I can get, I can make it, I don't, I don't know it for certain, I know that it's, it's pretty hard to get those to be adopted. I want to say that we appreciate you all coming over, from your call in, when we have issues, when you come over and you catch on flooding areas, for, um, as you know, we have a lot of low-lying areas, and we still have, uh, flooding issues. I know in my district, um, also, um, that was the most, um, typically, uh, but we appreciate when you do come and, and help with them, everything you offer to do, we appreciate. The water table, would you say there's, uh, normal, or, uh, average, or would you say that with all the rain, perhaps it, it's a little above, um, average? Or do you have that data?
Yeah, if we go back to that slide, if you try and go back, we'll talk. So, if you look at the groundwater conditions there, so you're, you were in the normal category in May. But again, I mean, I, I don't have this map for, for this May, but ten inches of rain does a lot to change where the water table is. Certainly around the Seenhappy, I would anticipate that that substantial rate is the official levels in that area, because of the ten inches of rain that came, you know, within the Seenhappy basin, I feel it was top four, we got, I know you guys got a lot of rainy in early June, and so, just low, very, and low rain, you got that, that amount of rainfall, it's kind of, so low, it's, it's higher right now in the area.
And I noticed when we were going through that area, you caught serious, and, uh, here, I was really concerned about the, um, water table. And then with all the rain, when, when certain people complained about it, but listen, we need this rain, we need this, it's good for offshore, so, we need it in here.
See, the May, May and thunder have gotten where they're forwarding on monthly basis, to not only this slide, but there are about a dozen others.
Right.
That there are all of that things, I mean, you can show where that rainfall is falling within our county, well, regional, it's a, it's a pretty good amount of rain.
And I think we should not anybody that's interested, we just released our June one, um, we present on our governing board each month, so we do have that available, if you have yet, and then I have your data.
Sure, I, I remember looking at that.
Yeah, we get that in the fact sheet. That is on the calendar recorded, so, uh, just kind of a piece of paper sometimes that's expected of the rainfall.
Right, that's right. Maybe two miles.
Well, for the grand tally, you have your minimum tax and tax, fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, you know.
Did y'all wanna pitch it for the press, or do you have time to split this, or something?
I, well, just give it back. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Conventional officers, other government officials, note, please, the project is subject to board advertising for this, a regional win, for achievement, and to re-advertise for one of the hydro not well at the last bid. Okay, I think you gotta agree about it. I'll be, you know, having to discuss it together, and so, the rain, so, well, those are by being declared as public property, so, I'm asking the board, do we have to, so, I have to make an article for those property? Also, we have added, uh, five more parcels through the achievement process, that, uh, sixteen zero zero eight through sixteen zero four. Now, I'm asking the board, do you want to declare those parcels, uh, as public property and add these to the list, so we can re-advertise fifteen thousand pounds? That's what the board was.
I would think that would be the way to do it.
Is that your recommendation?
That's right, yes, because the man that wants one of these parcels tried to pay me, what the value was, and I said, I can't do that, we have to re-advertise.
Okay. Okay.
So, you wanna advertise all of them?
Yeah, I would, all of them, I'm talking, yeah.
It's just, you know, you gotta declare those five, uh, the last five on that list as surplus, and then, uh, a motion to re-advertise. And having the. Right, yeah, is there a motion to, to, to surplus? Okay, we got a motion, by Commissioner Jeff, so, second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, is there a motion to re-advertise the twelve and add the five, for a total of seventeen?
I move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jeff, second by Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. On fourteen, the surplus discussed with the board, tax fees, applications, ownership, home.
Yeah, we have a issue, we just sold one that had a ship home on it, and comrades, I noticed my comrades that we had that, we have two more units. And what happens is, there's outstanding mortgages on these parcels away, so there's like a total of three ships a thousand that we had to do tax deed progress. Now, the last one we, uh, sold, none of you were stupid, so I think we're, was on the, the case that was on by an executive. So, they didn't all title to it, but I'm gonna let my comrades tell you what happens with the two thousand, uh, mortgage.
Once it's, or, once it's, it's sold, it obviates the mortgage, in other words, clears the title, but it doesn't obviate the money being owed. So, um, if you were going to do the first thing, you don't worry about the mortgage itself, because it clears the title, but the person, now, remember that the ship, um, money owed, it goes down as the years pass, so that has to be determined. So, as a practical matter, it's gonna be hard to ever collect the money. Y'all follow one of the last?
Okay.
Uh, that, that's helpful, my research, to be, and I talked to somebody else, there's a lot of foreclosures.
Okay.
Five years to date. Usually they're five years.
It's, it's, um, that might be constructed in twenty years.
Yeah.
And rehab for five.
Rehab for five, and, um, yeah, there's a point, right? Okay.
And I think my comrades talked a bit about the middle end, um, any tax deed applications? Do people buy, if they actually wanna resell it, they have to go through a process to get back and run through court process?
Well.
To be legal.
Well, what happens with that, say, for instance, uh, you purchased one, you know, and then, uh, you wanted to sell it to someone else, and they wanted to get a mortgage with, uh, say, the bank. The bank is gonna require that the title be cleared, and that not only just because of the Hatcher, that fee, they want more, and that would be in bill of plot title, which is a legal, uh, way to publicly clear, because they wanna make sure that they're, that, if they're first in line, um, with regard to, for money to other donors.
Is, is there, is there something in statute that says that the seven years, uh, limitation on that, after seven years, they probably have to do that, so they need seven years.
Yeah, yeah, but, but this ain't gonna work, seven, you know.
So, right now, if someone wanted to purchase a home, then that would be the one to have the, that's just tax deed?
Yeah.
No, it's, right.
And I think the one we sold from the information that I got, and genuine, knowing, I know something about that one, the man who actually owns the house and has his ship mortgage, passed away. He had no family members that said this, and for them to be able to do that, they have to provide this, that's never been done. Because the mortgage that's in the ship's other, I think it's totally something about not, but there's somebody living in that house, do you know who's living in that house? Or we'd have to get it straight, 'cause we, we found out in our investigation with the tax deed sale, that some, somebody's living in that house, we don't know if family member or who. So when this man gets his tax deed, he's probably gonna drive to the eviction, get that fucking house, um, and profit. So we need to discuss some of those issues, and what comrades are saying is, the debt goes with personal, right, that the mortgage, you can't do anything about mortgage. So, I was free, one was gonna pass away, and then the other two? See, I don't know about the other two, we just, I got concerned because he had already had that tax deed sale, and they come and huffing and dashing, and I'm, I'm comrades and all, and see, of course. But the amount of the debt does survive, with the person who owned the house, but the mortgage is gone, because, see, when we get the tax deed application, the tax collector does the top, and he certifies the name, all the surrounding landowners, plus anybody who doesn't need it, that's the mortgage thing. Mortgage, whatever, he certifies that to you, and everybody gets certified, so when the mortgage company is holding the mortgage, they should redeem the tax, just to convert the mortgage if they choose to do so, that's not happening, so.
We should, we will, why not?
Yeah.
There's one other thing I wanted to go back to number ten, um, Tommy should also approve the, um, government agreement, now, approve the, um, resolution, but we've got, like, the gentleman did through the government agreement, number ten, and it's not, and there's an agreement there.
Okay, just very much, sorry, thank you.
Not all.
Okay, okay, yeah, a motion by, um, Commissioner Murphy and second by Commissioner Dan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. Thank you, that's perfect. County staff items from the fifteen, the board discussed the county master plan, mobility, recreation, and connectivity funded through a Department of Economics, Opportunity, D E O, community plan, technical assistance plan, as intended by the county. What have you been out for? I've had to stop you all today because, um, we need to do the due package, if I only have a draft, um, so I'm providing all the topics. I, I started kinda, I am so proud of this, 'cause for the last ten years, when I had my own annual value, I invited county commissioner, a goal for me, I said every year was to do a national place in county, because I had been one back to the, like, two thousand, two thousand and three, then needed updates, so that would never be necessary. Um, we have been working away on this, this project was funded with a thirty thousand dollar grant from D E O, and part of it was the interest that F W C and Florida National Trail House in Taylor County, as part of the connector's connection to the Florida National Trail, and the economic impact it could have on the county. Last night I was doing a little bit of research, getting ready for the workshop tonight, and, um, you know, recently, three billion dollars in tourism, um, money was spent on trails in Florida, um, last year during a twelve month period. So it's a huge economic engine, and it's just something we really, um, need to participate in, and, and that F W C has really taken us under their wing on part of this, and helps us with their getting this grant. This is for the draft only, and we can apply for a second grant to have the actual, um, be the actual plan, and have become a part of our comprehensive plan, which will help sustain our grant dollars too. Um, the, that's another grant you can apply for, that can be a hundred percent grant funded, and just so you know, this grant actually, um, went into the consulting office to prepare this, but eight thousand dollars of the money from this grant went to fund, um, Danny and I's salary. So we actually worked on this, um, for free, for now, with grant dollars, so that's a good thing too, that, that we were able to do this. Um, the good part of this plan is identify, um, what we can do today, and what we can do tomorrow, but there are no commitments from the board in this plan, and, um, I told Marwada, I was so proud of that, because I worked, we worked really hard towards that, so that we had a plan for you, but knowing everything that we have to do, um, that we weren't committing you to anything, that we just gave you goals and guidelines, and, um, what was sufficient to help get us grant points. And this comes into play not only from a community standpoint, from you, um, and to help us become part of the Florida National Trail, but it can also help to get additional grant points, for example, on the F R D A grant we were talking about, um, if you have an adopted trail master plan, that's seven points, and, and on the F R D A grant, a half a point can make a big difference in whether we get that money. Um, there's also another section on the F R D A grant, where if that project's part of the connector, such as, um, say, if you do apply for the, um, F R D A sport complex grant, those trails within the sport complex connect to that sidewalk, that runs along nineteen, which was funded with the transportation alternatives grant, so that's considered a connector trip. And you get eight points, um, on that F R D A grant, because you have that sidewalk that connects when you have an adopted master plan. So it can help you not on F R D A, to your actual, um, um, often Greenways and Trail Grant, on your Sun Trail, um, program, you know, F W C to press, you aren't applying for Sun's grant money, so this can really come into play down, down the road. Um, we're holding a public workshop tonight, um, on this, and this has been a very public process, with, um, our first master plan meeting was, um, held this year, um, commissary meeting, a lot of us attended, and the room was full, there was no place else for people to go. Um, it was a very good public participation process, we broke up into groups, and each group gave a presentation then on what they wanted to do, that meeting lasted about three hours, we had, um, city minister and city council attendants, we had a second meeting then down in Steen Happy, and we did the same thing down there to get public consent on that, we broke up into groups. We held a third meeting here, um, which was a general meeting to update the landing process, and then we hold it tonight, but it's been a very, um, good public landing process from not only, um, high schools, high school and walking, but we had a good equestrian turnout, which was really good, because you have equestrians to press you over the year, we had a great turnout on that. We also had a lot of, um, A T V people at them, and we weren't, we weren't really prepared for that, but we were glad for that, because we didn't realize that there was so much need, um, for that in the community, and had a lot of good suggestions, so we were able to draw from the people, um, on these, we really had taken into account. So it's been, um, a very public, marketless process, and it's been a good gap learning process, because we were able to, um, get ideas that really weren't on our radar, as far as the. Um, do you have a summary of the previous meetings that I would be interested to see some of the ideas that were presented? Oh, sure, that's been included in our deliverables, um, and I will give you copies of the deliverables, because the office submitted deliverables to D E O through the process, and that included science team, it included the people's team, on where they did their own draft, I'll give you copies of that, 'cause it was really, was really neat, uh, really neat, the, the people broke up into groups, um, kinda on their own throughout the first meeting, and it was really interesting, because a lot of them were meeting together for the first time, or they just kinda meet each other, and they have such individual meetings. Um, it, it was a lot of fun, I, I normally like public workshops to there, just say, I have a meeting, you know, to get your grant points, where in this case, it was, it was actually fun. Um, Landville Herbert Consulting, they specialize in networking type, um, meetings, they helped draft the master plan for, um, the Waterfronts Florida Program down in Steen Happy, and they're very good from the standpoint of, of getting individual groups to interact with each other. Um, I actually found out about them at a waterfront meeting, because they were very involved in the, um, the F W C having met them, and they were more arguing with each other, they were one of the mediators in that, so I knew that they were really good at that, but they, they helped merge these groups that had the needs, and, but I'll give you copies of that, 'cause it was really interesting to, um, get the ideas. Um, it was, it means like, the big public workshop we had here, to hear all of the ideas, but.
It was pretty diverse.
It was a very diverse, and, and like I said, I didn't, I, I, the A T V thing wasn't on staff, we were more in the, of, um, F W C and the Florida National Trail, and that's really good for that. Um, also, in, in this process, we are applying for, um, Steen Happy, one of the things, uh, deliverables was, was Steen Happy to be a designated trail town, which is no, um, commitment from the board, you don't have to do anything, except commit to sacrifices, and, um, you are included in, in all, like, the, the Florida West Side, and, um, Florida National Trail's West Side, often Greenways and Trail, Florida Park. It's a very good way to get a lot of tourism dollars, who will help the camera, those cameras apply for tourism dollars, if they're designated community. Um, so I have that application ready, that would be on upcoming weekend, I might have to get a couple more ready for support, but if we could get that, that would be huge, from the county's standpoint, because there are only eight other communities in the state of Florida that can see this designation, and we are doing a fake on the Steen Happy River being a designated roadway, so that we don't have to make commitments, because if we did it from a walking trail standpoint, the board would have commitments, if we do it from a roadway, as a trail standpoint, now it doesn't have to be anything, because we took that into account, because I didn't want you to have to commit anything, and if we got that designation, we would be the first community in the state of Florida to be designated as a roadway. So a lot of work went into that application, and I will be bringing it to you for approval, so keep our fingers crossed on that.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, thank you. This has been a project I, I didn't expect to be a D E O, that has turned out to be a lot more work and I participate, but it's, I've learned so much, and D E O and F W C and, um, and F W C are so supportive of us, often Greenways and Trail have been attending our meetings, so it's worked out really good for us, helping network.
Yeah, that's great.
That's right, any, any questions, sort of, any, anything?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is fifteen Florida's equal?
No, no.
And the meeting tonight, is it, it's a lot, right here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alan sixteen, we want to discuss the upcoming funding cycle and possible project options for the corner renovation development program, F R D A T, this year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, as intended by the grant director. This is the one that, that I was referring to, um, and I won't interfere about the, the funding protocol and everything, but I'd sure like for us to put this on the next workshop, so that each commissioner can, we can discuss various projects that we're interested in, and, and see how we, how this works out with the funding, and, and kind of make that up, just if you give us a general, I would be, was this, what, what do you think? And one quick thing on the trail thing tonight, um, we have been putting together eleven by seven, we're gonna have that tonight, and we're gonna have a large scale map of the county and, um, trail network, um, for the public tonight, which we didn't have done in time for the agenda, um, I wrapped it up with Glenn's, her, your, to me, um, so if you are not present tonight, I will make sure, send your mail box, yeah, I'll, I'll have a copy of that eleven by seven map. Yeah, and, and are any of you, um, a copy of that, could you put on our website? We have Facebook page for this, we were required to do it, and if you go to our website, there's the connection link, but, um, that was one of the requirements of the grant, do you have that, and all of this is on that Facebook page? And for those of us that do not do Facebook? I don't do it either.
And I have that screen.
So we, and you might as well know, we.
Same here, same here. Some of the stuff is on the county website, too.
Um, yes, yes, so it is all on there, um, that was part of the public participation process, yeah. Okay, on for that, um, as you, as I told you earlier, you can do two projects this year, um, you can do two hundred thousand, you can do one, two hundred thousand and one fifty, or two fifty, you can do one process, or you can do none. Um, I'm gonna give you an example, um, and it may not be on your radar, but I'll need to be thinking of a very good process here in Taylor County, two four examples, that, um, you can get the points really, really easy, but in there, packets were received on how we go on about getting points, and it's done by population in the areas that you live in in Florida. So it's kind of a difficult process to follow, um, from the standpoint of, of y'all, because this is a company you work with all the time, and we're population density too, and we get points based on what they consider important for our population density, and if you look at like a hundred thousand dollar enough, the point system works totally different. So what the state considers our priority is renovation project, which, what you're gonna do after the sport complex, when you do the value changes, that is considered a renovation to your volume, and, and that is a big difference in points. So when you're thinking about projects important to you, I encourage you to think about something that's existing, and, and doing a renovation or add on to that, because that, that helps. Um, in turn, and what they consider priorities for our population density is, um, support facilities, flagrants, and, um, restrooms, so that's considered, um, important. Now, I know, um, Hoss Park has been the goal for the year, it, it is, and I have a similar idea on that, that's all, on Hoss Park, but, um, since the last F R D A grant was for Hoss Park, the only way you can get points for Hoss Park and the restrooms, you have to do a complete teardown and rebuild, which I know you're interested.
I'm very much interested.
The problem is on Hoss Park, on F R D A, you have to have all these other elements to get your points, but, um, that, that is impossible on sport complex, we would begin it from a renovation standpoint, because your last, one of your last grants was for the sport complex, your last three grants, like I told you earlier, was in Hoss Park, Hoss Park, and, um, an element of the sport complex. Also in addition to these points, you have to go by what they call your relative need and debt, and, um, for that, they consider football, picnic, nature study, soccer, baseball, sports back riding, outdoor basketball, trailer camp. outdoor basketball, trailer camping, freshwater boat rescue, bike riding, and then say trails. So your project needs to have something within that category, um, to, to, to get points in that area. So, um, that's kind of the reason you need your planning process right now. Now, I would mention, um, Fuwana for, would you want to do a fifty thousand dollar project at South Park? And I went down and took pictures there last night. That's a renovation project. And just seeing there looking at it, I went, went back and you could, your maximum point, thirty-four points, like really easy there because there are so many needs right there. And, um, you may want to look at that as a fifty thousand dollar project. I don't know. I mean, y'all, that's up to you. But that, that project is one of those projects you can do a whole lot of changes there. You can change within that fifty thousand dollar range and get your maximum points easy. So, um, and, and that would have played the basketball court needs restriking. Your playground needs mops there. Um, I stopped watching pictures last night because the playground there is, is pitiful. You can paint your picnic tables there and that counts as picnic upgrades. Um, the fence needs fixed. You need your parking restrikt. You need a security light there and you can use the line of lighting. And you're already well over the point just with those little things right there. So you might want to look at, um, that was something that can renovate and that you can do really quickly.
I want to look at, um, you know, come time to look at, you know, where we have a lot of activity and what would be the most beneficial for the most people, local and visitor. But certainly, you know, I'm sure we'll all have our, our projects. Um, yeah, everybody knows that I'm very interested in projects. Even though it's in somebody else's district, um, I am down there a lot. That's on my home down there. And, um, I see a lot of activity, but we can certainly discuss that at, at the workshop.
The land and water conservation funding cycle is coming up too. It follows immediately behind FERnat. Um, it's the same point system. It's ran by the same people, same programs, all part of DDP. Um, we use the land and water conservation grant to do a lot of the elements down here in the coastal parks. Um, you get, I believe, points if you are on a water, water area, which, which you get a Hoss Park grant, for example. However, that grant does have a map and that you cannot wait because it's special and right. Um, and then I know there was some interest, um, I know, um, Commissioner Moody, you have some interest in, um, Frin Warrior. And if we weren't to acquire that, because we didn't like to use your store, um, at Florida Community Trust Fund, this cycle is coming up. So that's another funding source to keep in mind for that. And that hasn't been mentioned during, during this, but, um, the FERnat grant also, like when we acquired, um, it can be, to be a breakeven, it can be, be a mental acquisition of that land. A FERnat grant is used for acquisition, part of the acquisition there. Um, you can apply to acquire land through FERnat. Acquisition is one of the, um, things. But I know for example, you're not going to get Frin Warrior for two hundred thousand dollars. So it has to be a parcel of land that falls under about two hundred thousand dollar market you're going to acquire. But you can do it for acquisitions and you can turn around and do, uh, development, um, dollars to follow the years of development. Um, next year you will be, submit two grants this year. You'll be eligible to submit one grant next year because three is the maximum you can have. And the funding took how many years? Uh, well, you will know next year that you're going to receive the grant. You will know next year because it will be the next year's legislative cycle. And you have three years to expend the money.
Okay, and you can, uh, intermeagle, uh, the FERnat and the water, the land conservation.
Yes, yes, okay, yes.
So yeah, one of the, he can, he can spend them as long as they fit within the model, but yes, within the right system.
Got it.
And you can have one open land and water conservation and the three open FERnat grant. And then we frequently use, um, the subsidized projects we've done, for example, at Steen Happy, we have FERnat and coastal partnerships and this is, if you have, if it's water access, we frequently will do that. And we frequently, um, like right now, the, the Steen Happy Bogman Stocking Project is, um, SFC and TPI. So you can intermeagle coastal partnerships. It's a small grant, but it's a annual grant. And, um, it has a quick turnaround, um, so we do intermeagle that.
Thank you.
We just need to, like during the workshop or whatever, do the ten points, um, the projects you want, you want to use so we can have the public hearings and the public.
We have a workshop next week and, um, I would suggest that, um, each commissioner, uh, think about, um, your particular projects that you would like to see. And then, uh, I feel like we can discuss all of them and outline and whatever we choose, then get a design and a cost. And, um, just go from there with, uh, what funding source we're going to use, but-
Right, and it's, and it's like, um, I listed out three projects for Fuwana last night on the point system. If, uh, if you know of a project you want, I can list out the number of points for you, you know, if you will let her know and, uh, on the bottom end.
Workshop, and that would be official.
Yeah, I gave, I gave her a sheet today for the, and right where we stood at as far as points and where we're at on that. And I listed out the elements and I can, I can do that for you. And sometimes if you change your wording, uh, like for example, if you call the resurfacing of the sports complex an exercise trail, it's an extra point over a nature trail. And it's an extra point over a walking trail. So sometimes if I think about it such creatively and like I said, for your support facilities, um, landscaping house, you can throw in five hundred dollars worth of landscaping to get that two hundred thousand dollars. Just, just, you know, thinking outside the box, why am I going to do that really real to get all that extra money?
Well, we, we decide and that's on this and we'll certainly be depending on you to see how we can, uh, change it about as we need to. It maximizes the-
And, and I was hoping that Commissioner Dent would still be here. Um, on the aquatic center, he brought up, the city is eligible to apply for two FERnat grants themselves. So if they wanted to do like an aquatic project or a park project, um, we have definitely, especially with DAP this year, we encourage them to spare the option to apply for a FERnat grant. But they're eligible to apply as a city for FERnat grants also. And that may be a good idea on an aquatic center. Um, but I want to encourage, since they encourage the city, um, that they can go after these same, same grants. It was a two pound.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All the work. Um, seventeen, the board can consider approval of the request made by the sheriff to add one stop sign to the intersection of Jimmy Archer Road and Joel Aman Road as a candidate, and a public work director.
Ma'am, the sheriff approached me about this different investigation when you, uh, limited site distance. By now, Jimmy Archer Road, when you pull up on there, when they're looking back to you, and requested if we could put a stop sign in there. Make, make that intersection on the left.
Okay, let me just go back over the history of this. Um, I knew we're out here, but, uh, Commissioner Moody was here. And there were, uh, a couple of people that lived on Joel Aman that wanted us, like they wanted us to put a four-way stop. Well, first they wanted us to cut the big large oak tree as it comes to the intersection of, of Joel Aman and Jimmy Archer. If you look to the left, there's a big oak tree.
There's still one.
It's still there. And they wanted us to remove that, which happens to be on private property. And we could not do that. So then they wanted a four-way stop, uh, sign. And we decided not to do that. And then they wanted stop signs on Jimmy Archer. I would say a hundred percent of the people from that point on Jimmy Archer to the end of Jimmy Archer oppose that stop sign. And nobody has contacted me with anything different except, I've been out of town for the last few days and I've tried to contact some of the people just to let them know what was going on, that this was on the agenda. I've heard from some of the people who read it said, no, we do not want a stop sign there. And I would like to be able to get response from the rest of my constituents on Jimmy Archer, um, and, and see if they still, still pay or if they want a stop sign there. Uh, but as we talked to several years ago, I think at that time we concluded that a stop sign could be more dangerous. And I know in my neighborhood, stop signs were put out and you don't dare trust that stop sign. You better stop because people who not pay attention on Jimmy Archer Road for a hundred years, perhaps along that road that's been there should not have a stop sign. All of a sudden, if you put a stop sign in the middle of Jimmy Archer Road, I bet you're going to create a worse, uh, situation, a more dangerous situation. But I didn't want to hear the best of my constituents, but I can tell you, I feel like hopefully they're going to say no. But this is not something that I'm interested in deciding today. But I, I'd like to hear from Elon.
I understand the sheriff's intention.
He approached me about this and it's been a regulatory sign. I have to be a little bit.
How do you feel about it?
I'm not familiar with that. You have limited site distance when you pull up on Joel Aman, pull up Jimmy Archer, looking back to you. You have limited site distance because of those laws, that's true.
Now, are people stopping there as a precaution?
I, I don't know. I'm not aware of any accidents there. This is just a request by the sheriff he brought from me. And it's been a regulatory accident before.
My guess is to be sure that probably one of the people that wanted that stop sign there several years ago probably brought it to the sheriff because we at that time decided not to do it. But when you, when you're on Joel Aman Road and when it intersects with Jimmy Archer, there's a stop sign there. And so you have to pull out a good way to see around that oak tree. So you have a stop sign anyway. If you were to, if I did, if you were to put a stop sign on Jimmy Archer too, and somebody pulled up there and they didn't do it correctly, they didn't assume that people on Jimmy Archer was on a day that stop sign, I would never do that.
But that would bring the intersection on the four ways.
Well, if a, if a key intersection was not four way, I think.
There'd be a three way, but you know, basically.
I haven't been there in about a year, but I need to go look at it.
Yeah, you'll see. Um, but there's a lot of traffic on Jimmy Archer. And a lot more traffic on Jimmy Archer, I think, than there is on Joel Aman. Yeah, yeah.
I think that people in there first probably mentioned that in the past, you know. And your comments you mentioned in the past year has considered the possibility of removing some of that, uh, the trees within that. And instead of on private property, so we wouldn't be able to. And I would ask, um, the county to probably weigh in a little bit on in our code ordinances, there it is, they could reduce this little triangle that is supposed to be void of obstruction at an intersection, depending on what type of intersection it is, that I would say that we could use to rely on to make the request for the, that state can be removed or to use that to substantiate our actions, or in that issue.
Yeah, now, I know, um, we cut down a lot of small vegetation, but you're talking about-
I thought about outside of the right of lane. Basically, what you do is you would go a hundred feet down each way of this tee, join, connect the docks, connect the triangles. And the area within that triangle is what you would remove that, the side of structure. I think you're right on point on putting up an additional stop sign for the westbound traffic on, um, that I think they're going to become hallowed to it and kind of ignore it because of their familiarity with that area. But this little triangle, there are several places that we can do this drop down, but obviously it's one that if we could at least, maybe they'll do the legality of it for public work interest or forces to go in and remove that when the landowner isn't in a position to be able to do that. That would be beneficial in many areas.
Yeah, so there's a huge oak tree. Um, is there a chance?
Well, I always say first, the first thing to do is to contact the landlord, determine whether he or both of them would be, I mean, we're not just doing something about the tree before I'll be trying to legal in a situation looking at our ordinance, that someone would do it, um, without their consent. I mean, that would be the first, the first thing to do.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. But in the instance where, let's say, they wouldn't mind if anyone looks, but they weren't fine able to remove that at their expense, they would love to have the support and ordinances to say, Hank, you can send your trees out there to do this and it's a power of the-
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Well, I think for-
Is the left side their passive way to address the big ones?
It sure is. Because for public safety, that oak tree obstructs the view. There's no doubt about it. Uh, so really, um, I think we agreed before that we thought that the oak tree should come down. But the homeowners, I don't think could, um, do that at that time. And they may not, and may not, and don't. For public safety, it probably needs to come out.
Well, I'm not familiar with, um, Jimmy Archer Aman Road. I've been there, but I can't remember. Is the tree such that it could be, um, pruned? Or you gotta take all the things?
It's a huge oak. And actually, the top of the tree is what obstructs the view, right?
Yeah, probably thirty-two to thirty-six inches. Quarter of it. Oh. Okay.
Is that something we need to, to get, to get, to talk with the board? You need to talk to-
I've been contacting the landlord, right?
I think so, yeah.
They would be, uh, table us, go in and take the tree down.
Yeah.
And then we just fall back on ours.
Yeah.
The ordinance as far as us going on private property.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, if we need to have first, we're allowed to make it down the center of the road. If all of the code ordinances, to see, we can paint the line and show the landlord. Everything roadworthy this line, we will remove that vegetation before some people take you there.
I think that's the way to go. That's my opinion.
We just wanted to kind of split the issues to make sure that what we perceive was, um, off of the teaching.
Yeah.
Make contact with you and just find out and we'll get it.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a good idea.
Eighteen, we want to discuss proposed hameter rancid subdivisions on the flat as a candidate by the county engineer.
Commissioner, um, this is the hameter rancid subdivision. Uh, we received this quite some time ago, back in twenty seventeen. As you will see in the recommendation, there, the flat itself is ready, uh, this is chapter one seventy-seven. But the associated items that being, uh, included in there are not in a position to, um, warrant approval. But just to kind of expedite the approval process, uh, what that is recommending is that you are in a position where you can approve the final flat and engine on the developer successfully re submitting those items in an approvable form.
Sounds good. And on this one, it's the HOA documents that have not been completed?
No, ma'am. Um, it's actually the Development Construction Improvement Agreement. It's basically an agreement in your code ordinances that says we will, because we are requesting for the flat to be approved, which allows for the provision of the land through the salv lot, is being, uh, they're requesting for it to be approved prior to constructing the improvement. Well, they need to provide assurance that they're actually going to complete those. That comes in the form of a development agreement as well as an associated surety bond. They have provo, the developer provided, um, a surety document that is, uh, as I stated in here, is a whole make-up line of credit. I can't see anything within that that extends itself to the Board of County Commissioners in the event the developer were to walk away from it. Um, that is the reason for the surety is that when we approve things that include the requirement to construct them, we have to have some assurance- we have to have some assurance that we are in a position to where we can complete those if they don't follow through their individual. On top of that, um, the development provided two quotes, um, which are very loosely acceptable under the code ordinances, despite being actually a construction contract, but they're quotes. Both of those quotes, uh, were for a hundred fifteen thousand plus. Uh, the surety form that they were proposing was only eighty-seven thousand. So that, not only is it the wrong format, but it's the wrong amount. So what we are suggesting is that let's return this information back to the developer, kind of avoid the delay of having to come back to you guys. The, the flat itself is ready to sign. We'll hold that signature in the bay until we can get these other things, um, in an approvable format and it'll make it a little bit more expedient for the developer.
Because what you're saying is that we require A, B, C, and the developer has not, uh, provided A, B, and C.
He got A, but not the M.
Okay, so what we need to do then, uh, that he, what he's recommending is that we, um, uh, go ahead and approve the contingent on the developer providing, uh, those things that are missing.
Yes, ma'am, and very much the niceties. If you read the code ordinances, I shouldn't be here submitting this, but because this one has taken so long to get to this point and the flat is ready, these other things to me are just not nice, tough and easy that they need to go through before.
Okay, is, is, is there any conversation or is there a question?
I agree personally, felt group, working and make a lot of that yesterday.
And I do have a question that I made, um, just for clarification. Within the ordinance, here it lists as security requirements, which are patches, checks, certified checks, developer lenders, county agreement, and just varying certificate of deposit, irrevocable letter of credit, and surety bonds. An irrevocable letter of credit would not be a home equity bond?
That's correct.
Or a line of credit, excuse me, is, is what you're.
Yes, no, I, I do not see any beneficiary provisions within that home equity line of credit. It is literally, um, if you read the documents, it is a, an open letter of credit against this individual's home that they are allowed to borrow again and pay back over a fund period of ten years. It is not of an encumbered monetary source that in the event something went to, they got halfway through it and it's, uh, the thing working out. Well, then there, there is no provision for the Board of County Commissioners to utilize the balance of those funds to complete the project because we've already approved the final flat.
Well, surety has been on.
Well, Ms. Lamora, what, what was her answer when you talked to her about it?
We did not discuss the, well, let me back up. Uh, my communication has been through her attorney's office as far as this particular question. So I have not spoken with her personally about the home equity line of credit. I believe that her understanding was that it was defied. But we did send communications through the attorney's office that that was not acceptable. And it's because it cannot be assigned, basically, to the Board of County Commissioners if there could be fault and, and the board has to assume the completion of the project, is that.
It was simple, one is insufficient amount and two is.
Correct.
It's asking if it's sufficient.
Correct.
Things you'd ever know about?
No, sir, that's fine, there, there's an abundance of things that aren't right.
I, I will do, there's a lot of others, you know, and, again, I mean, you do these things. Remember what happened when there's someone or there's some thing that there's, you know, I, I, I read the letter, well, it's a private, um, um, you know, subdivision for lack of better terms, but yes, we, uh, come to, and there's a flood or there's a, a catastrophe or something, you can't get the ambulance in there, you can't get, they come to us and I'm mashing my teeth when y'all are looking at me saying, "Can we do this?" It's on private property, you know, so the thing is, number one, it's the amount of it. Number two, it's not mature. Number three, it's, you know, uh, he signed it, but it wasn't notarized. And if somebody comes back and notarizes and put that signature subsequent, that's illegal. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, uh, the thing is, it needs to be, uh, correct, uh, for the protection of not only the board, but the protection of.
That's right, so I guess what we're looking for is a motion then to approve this contingent on the developer providing everything that, uh, that is requested and set forth that we need. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, so our motion by Commissioner Murphy is a second.
I'll play it, please.
And our second by Commissioner Levy, any further discussion? I have a question. This flat will not be continued according to all that.
There are going to be two signatures that will be withheld, not in my hand, the chairman's.
I almost said something, and in my district, I have a road that was paved years ago and the county said that it had about three quarters of inches paved on real cool limestone. And then sooner or later, it got to the point where it just, we needed something done to it. And finally, we, most greater man was down the road to Old Oak, and y'all remember this. We ended up actually down the middle of Old Oak, down Crystal Land. That's the kind of fun you get into if you don't do it right.
That's right.
And I mean, I just, that's what, I don't know, you know, coming out of, oh, we just, we're gonna stand behind it and expect it to make it pretty long.
Yeah, that's a good point. So we have a motion and a second. Any other, uh, prescriptions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, then sign, motion canceled. I will not see the board to discuss Comette Ranch subdivision construction plans as presented by the county engineer.
Um, in the preceding item, one of those components, because the developer is requesting final flat approval prior to the construction being completed, they are required to provide construction plans that, um, cover those improvements. I have gone through, um, uh, this is probably on the fourth version, and identified those items that are, they need to be addressed to reconstruct the building. And I would like to go here, once they, um, address those items, the construction plans will be ready for approval. What do y'all know?
Okay. Any, uh, discretion from the board or the county?
Oh, we would do the, the review on that.
No, no, sir, we actually have to approve them. Um, and what I've recommended is, is that you will approve the contingent on them addressing items that I have reached with, with them addressing this one.
Anybody want to make that motion?
Um, you got there, because I can do it substantially in a great way, really. They had to agree on any of that, I mean.
Um, some of these, there are quite a few of these that are, are repeat items that, um, the issues are, continue to be there each time. I will continue to not approve them until they're addressed. And until these get approved, you will not see me request you to sign a final flat.
Is there a motion to, uh, um, go with this contingent, uh, approve this contingent on them supplying everything that they need?
I'm with it, sir.
And, uh, motion by Commissioner Lamora, any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, then sign, motion carried. Thank you, ma'am. Out of twenty, the board can continue to discuss the speed schedule for roll-off site disposal as presented by their homeowner and environmental services director.
And, uh, I went back when we took it out, the thick, the thick up on, uh, basically the same plan, and, uh, that's about all we've done on this. I don't know what you guys, you want, uh.
You pick up the pickup?
Pickup.
Okay, meaning that if debris is brought to the roll-off site and it's, and it's pickup loaded size, that that would not incur an additional cost? If the board wishes to move forward with the invoice, the invoicing, the jack in the day, Mr. Lamora can create it for you.
Well, obviously, I spent a lot of time, um, um, going over this and I, um, I know, um, this Murphy has provided some data and I think probably it's for the board. I asked, we wanted to put together this little packet this morning. And then I took the information from the clerk and put it into a table so it's easy to, to see and easy to, to see what, oh, it's easy to have done. But I go back to, um, um, I go back to, um, ordinance. And our ordinance says household garbage only. Now, everything, right?
I told the codified ordinance, and what I signed, and I did that this morning, but, and Tom, I may need your help with this. I know that the discussion has been that the assessment is for household garbage or for household waste, but I don't, I, I could not find the language in our codified ordinance. I think we need to look some more. It discusses a fee for household, and I believe the intent was that the assessment be for household, for household waste. But I'm wondering if that meant no C and D.
Well, that's a, and yes, we're trying to make a critical distinction. And I'm, I'm, as an attorney, but, uh, it, it, it seems like the new standard wasn't a clear cut that, that it's not, it's trying to do what the intent was, but what does the ordinance say? Um, so if indeed it is for household garbage only, then everything, I've been here and I don't know how much further back than that, we certainly not abode it by our ordinance. Now, at one of these meetings that we've had recently, I know there was discussion and, and, um, I myself was talking about, um, pickled, that pickup their yard debris. I'm not talking about cutting down a big oak tree or a pine tree or, but, but, and tearing down a, a, a mon or a big picnic company, but just when you clean up your lawn or yard debris, that, that, in my opinion, should be, uh, added to the ordinance so that we can pick up that. And they have a different set of rules or whatever you want to call it for your C and D and things like that. So I'm just wondering, Ms. Commissioner, do we, do we need to start with ensuring that we have the law on that? Is this on?
I'm, I'm sorry, that's. I'm not sure.
Okay, um, just what the ordinance says with regard to solid waste. Solid waste means garbage, refuse, or other discarded solid materials included solid waste materials resulting from domestic, industrial, commercial, or agricultural operations, governmental operations, and community activities, does not, does not include hazardous waste. Other materials deemed to be a significant negative for food, water, or storage. That's what solid, that's what you're going by, right? But yes, a real object.
In, in that term, what does that mean exactly?
Well, there's a separate definition for construction debris.
Right.
That further clarifies garbage versus construction debris.
See, what I'm looking for, construction, this is under, um, definition again, another section on that definition, you know, um, construction and demolition debris means discarded materials generally considered to be non-water soluble and non-hazardous in nature, included but not limited to steel, glass, brick, concrete, asphalt material, pipe, aluminum, spосе, gypsum, wallboard, roof entanglement, and lumber from the construction or destruction of a structure as part of a construction, demolition project, or from the renovation of a building for purposes of this subdivision, which how the copy gang would consider it a construction debris. I thought that it was pretty clearly defined in, in the ordinance, and we can follow on that part?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, all right, I got a yes on one and a no on the other, right?
Yes.
Now, seems pretty clear what the definition is, don't you agree?
I do.
I probably correctly.
Yeah, it is.
So what we're doing, what we've been doing, seeing, for allowing yard debris, that's okay?
Assuming to, um, what's solid waste to define that, yes, ma'am.
So we're okay with that?
Yes, ma'am, I think so.
I'll give you a chance, okay? Um, okay, so it seems like then we have a couple of things that we have to decide. If, if, if our garbage and our yard debris, we're saying that that's okay. If we're gonna continue to do that, which I'm, we're continuing to do that, and we're gonna keep the, the class the same, then we have to address the C and D. Uh, and how we're, you know, where is it gonna be taken? Or how, how are we gonna charge for it, or, or, or whatever? So what is your recommendation?
Well.
I'm gonna give you a chance.
I, I don't have all the answers on this, and I still think if we charge, like, on the sheet right there, going in, uh, and we handle the invoice, you know, far as not paying any cash or anything like that, it will put a little bit on handyman, I'm not sure, that what, what, I don't know. I think we could do a lot of the, uh, a lot of the paperwork for, but you're gonna probably have to receive a lot of your payment for that.
Would it not be just the same or similar to what we do with our boat ramp speed? Okay, so our staff would take the responsibility of, of invoicing and collecting the funds, and we would pay that information to the handyman.
Yes, I think that's the only way.
First of all, yeah.
So what do you, you, you're thinking that's giving like a ticket, we make example of it? You will give, you will have a two or three part form?
Either that or another suggestion was a prepaid, some type of prepaid ticket, um, where we would, we would pre-sell, you know, a ticket for so many trailer folds. I just think that would get very complicated as far as.
It can.
Trying to decipher, okay, well, what size is this trailer and what size is this trailer? And for someone to, to.
This is kind of what you're, you're looking at over here.
Right.
Right here, I don't, do you want to say it?
Yes, but you know, it, it, just.
You think I want to?
No, I took this, I pulled this out, I, I brought this to you to look at, so. That's, that's what we received, like, I think that person brought it five weeks ago, that's one day.
As a citizen, if I'm gonna do something in this Saturday and, oh, I'm gonna get prepaid for something and I can't do it because I have a prepaid, when I go to prepaid, I would not like that. Just speaking from me, I would not want to do that. I'd much rather take it there and you look at what I've got and then write me a ticket because if it's prepaid, well, okay, I only have a four by eight. And you show up by, with an eight by twelve, then what is the attendant? It shouldn't be on the, on the shoulders of the attendant then to argue with the customer. And so that's what's on my mind. The other thing is, now, have collections been a problem with the boat ramp? Uh, you know, you have some people say, "I'm not gonna pay it." Right, I always had people that cut us out. We've had people with three new dump trees, I have that on my trailer. And we had different ones that we, we worked through those issues. We don't get as many cut now, it's minimal, you know, they either provide all trees that they have thick or they can.
Reverend, if we take money on bike or if we do it, do we base on the numbers?
You can't take it on bike.
I'm just saying regardless, whichever way. And if we took off about a four different foot ticket and if you know who's in spite of them, let's put it on there based on the volume and what I change, this is gonna get you out of the debt, it's within a year. Do you not do this?
It's very well done.
Put a big dent.
It works.
Well, and if I can understand, now we have to take into consideration that we may have to hire, as a part-time employee, to, to process this type of work and, I mean, this is something new for us. So it's hard to predict how many exits we can leave for that.
Right. Now, if I went through the information that, uh, the survey provided and made this table, um, if you go through it, you'll see where a lot of counties, their C and D is, uh, wasteful, wasteful better. Uh, and just like Calhoun County, it's wasteful. Some of them, um, they prepaid for containers and then when it's full, the county picks it up. Uh, some of them have a landfill and it's paid by the wait. But now, in terms of a transfer site, what is the transfer site?
It's where they bring in, you gotta establish five B E regulations for what they can do or can't do, that happens. Pick up a lot of land where they come in, set it up, and they bring in all the debris that is not household. They transfer it to the, like, here if we do anything.
And Dixie County, what they have is a transfer site and everybody carries their stuff there. And Dixie County, because she pays forty-four thousand dollars a year for transfer station costs. And they have to get that stuff to Greenville, so they put it at that station site and then, like, they pick it up and take it to, uh, moving around.
They all twenty-five tons of loads and then we all take the same tons of loads.
And then, um, on one of the counties, they actually come for us with Lake Forest to go to that site, pick up stuff and take it to the land.
That's what Calhoun, uh, Calhoun County and, um, uh, and Safe Reserves with Dixie County. They have a transfer site and they pay per the, the fee schedule. And in addition to that.
When they come?
Yeah, it, you know, so, um, it's, this, everybody it seems like has something sort of different. And it's just, just to know whatever people live with, we still have to decide what's best for us.
And, and if you say, um, like, when the clerk said curfide, it's usually wasteful running that operation. They control the whole gamut there and that's what they want to do, that's how they make their money. The curfide and the transfer, a transfer station is very expensive to put in, so they got rid of the money back on that.
What was our estimate on, on the transfer station from Lake Forest?
Waste broke that one point five million per station.
And that's on, on their part, yeah.
Well, I know Franklin County and Calhoun County, uh, they, uh, that's supposed to be used wasteful.
And, and, uh, well covered, they do.
Uh, yeah, mandatory doors are on, what, what, some pickup and, um, but anyway, um, well, you know, it's kind of make it so that if you're picking up your yard trash, we can continue to do what we're doing, not pay extra. And then with the C and D, um, the complaints that I've had is that, um, you know, they don't have anybody to take it and, and it makes a big fix. So your recommendation again is.
I think go right up to this and look at that list and, and look at the, the pricing on it. That's just a rough graph if you guys wanna look at it and.
Now, it says, uh, the rate schedule for vegetative debris. So if you come up there with an eight-foot trailer and, and look at how this and yards flowing on, uh, new limbs and pom poms and all of that, are they gonna become Tommy's or ours?
What they should do is they got a pickup full and I would put it in pickup because the pickup's free. That's what I was, I.
Okay, but the pickup, we need to make that clear because we did.
Oh, we took the pickup out.
We took it out.
I took all the pickups out, I'll do that now.
Okay.
All the trucks, pickups.
Okay, before the, uh, uh, I do want to, I have somebody in the audience, if you want to come forward, say your name and address and.
Police department, you know, I think one big of these, police retreat. My husband and, like you know that, they're a home business. We have had issues at the beach and in San Antonio with people's yard debris. Now, these people pay taxes, they pay whatever we all pay for garbage or whatever, what we used to pay. I don't know if we used to pay it or we don't, in the county, maybe it does, or whatever. But anyway, we are not allowed to take yard debris to the dump. Even because we're a commercial business. We've been stopped, we have to take it all the way to Greenville to the landfill ourselves. And I'm talking pom poms, small things, you know, that's what we've had. And it's been really pain for us and that, I want to, when he read that and said that garbage, lawn debris is included and that, I'm asking, is it included for us? Because up to now, it hasn't.
I want to address that. My understanding is that we have not allowed contractors to utilize the roll-off site for several, several years, many years.
Right, but we're doing business for citizens of this county, cleaning their yard. We could be able to haul it just like they would, like this would.
We've got a process that we've been working on, we've carried down, an incinerator site, you know, most. That's what, that's what we've been trying to put in place, just to use our incinerator to burn the kind of debris you talked about.
Right.
But we were going to ask for fee boards, you know, and, and that's.
Well, and that's, and then we'll just have to charge them all.
That's right.
You know, but I just, we need, I'm glad if it's legal and acceptable, we need to be able to do it.
Right.
Even though we're a contractor, it's still citizens' burden.
Yeah, well, you see, that's the same argument that I presented when we had someone here that wanted to start a garbage pickup business and anybody that wanted to contract with him, like they contract with you for yard, to pick up their household garbage, they would pay him whatever fee he charges. But when he takes their garbage that they didn't take and he takes it to the roll-off, then I, I've always said, I didn't think that there should be a fee for that because something different from them.
Right.
Down and you taking it down. But see, Lisa, the, the problem comes in is when you throw mattresses up there and refrigerators.
I'm, I'm saying that.
Big, 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 big fridge and eighty-foot pine tree. And we're, we're not charging for that and it's breaking us, so we have to do something about that. But I, I agree with you. It, it, it's the only thing you're taking is what they would have taken, then, um.
But he's not being called that, I want to, the person who's going to do the household. I think that we all agreed that he had to prove that that person had paid a hundred and forty dollars.
He has.
Prior to the, he was up in.
Yeah, so what she thinks, Lisa, is that a hundred and twenty dollars a year is what we all pay for, uh, our, you know, for.
Debris, obviously, we have all the.
So with this, Tom, we just wanted to make sure that he proved, uh, that these people had paid their hundred and forty. He just didn't go, you know.
Right, you're taking that as their own burden.
What happens is, there's a lot of them people that bill for a hundred and forty dollars, but they never pay. And we have no way to collect it.
And you know, when they're thinking about that, I may be guilty. I don't know when I've seen them bill for that.
It's on the.
It's on the tax code.
Okay, so when you pay your tax, okay, okay, I'll pay it.
But because they're taxes and all that, a hundred and forty dollars in.
Well, the problem is.
I always say whatever it is I have.
Those people who are covered by home city district, twenty-five thousand dollars. The only thing on their tax bill is a hundred and forty dollars special that's for garbage.
And then they have.
And they don't care if they pay them off.
But you can't have somebody, you can't make people pay.
Well, it comes along on their property. And then every seven years it just drops off, they don't ever pay. See, you got a bunch of those that don't pay and they don't sell for tickets because of my value.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I, I certainly understand what you're saying and, and then on the other hand, you know, we have to protect. We can't, um, provide a service where we're not making ends meet.
Right.
But I'm saying, huh, so what is the other condition? What, what are your, what are your thoughts on, on that of somebody like them that just carrying what? I would cook for the roll-off anyway.
You know, if I may, what did say, say in our ordinance about disposal of limbs? Is that all limbs brought to the roll-off site in the county for disposal shall be no longer than forty-eight inches in length and twelve inches in diameter. So we haven't prohibited the disposal of limbs, we've limited the size. And that is, that in itself has, is what causes an issue if people, if anyone brings a trailer full of, of trees or they cut down trees and you have, you know, big sections, because that's, that's, um, clarified, you're not working.
But I do think, from what I've heard here in the past, that if you're a contractor and you pull up there and you pack your sign on your truck or something and then you're told that you can't, that you can't drop it off there, no matter, am I right?
You're right, and what, and what happens is, it ain't the, it ain't the one person coming up that, it's the person that brings multiple loads in at any time. You'll get five, eight loads a day of fifteen-foot trailer. And there, some of them will have, probably get in with contractors, some of them aren't even contractors. And that's what's killing it, is them multiple loads and stuff like that.
Well, I have another question, the beders, uh, where are we supposed to, where are we supposed to take that if we have beders?
That's what we're expecting, we're going to discover.
You have to go to.
Not to allow just limbs to be carried to the incinerator.
Okay, and what's the timeframe on getting that made, or do we have it?
We're, I, I think we're, I think we're about there though. And, and if it's cut four foot length, it'll be acceptable.
Yes, that as well, if it's cut four foot length, we can take it to the dump.
To the incinerator.
Uh, to the, it's gotta be set up for the incinerator too.
What if it's.
Throw it all in there.
Why, it's sort of fit.
Well, that's cool. What about if we have a load, I'm sorry, I'm taking some time just to clarify, and we got limbs and we got pom poms and, and all that goes to the incinerator?
Yeah.
Together, okay, this wood bomb.
You know, kept thinking, tell them they're maybe trees or lumber.
Okay, none of that, for yard, for the, anything that goes to the incinerator.
But there's a fee associated with the incinerator.
Well, that, that's fine, we'll just have to pass that thing on to the people and angel them, I mean, we're gonna get, like you say, cut out. But if you want your yard done or you don't, well, I would, you need to pay for it.
Go to the, go to the incinerator, big bad, go and drink.
Yes, yes, where is the incinerator when we locate?
Come here to the landfill, it's sort of set up and we'll.
I'm risen down.
Down in my risen, okay.
And we'll set up and get a drink.
I get out of the way about that, but I just, like I say, I, all these years we've been having to find a place to take, set up a fire and you can't burn on the word I can use, too. And I was just wondering, with that being said, if we were legal, would it be done?
Right.
Thank you.
But if we, if we're telling people we're taking those, you know, so, then, how long do we get them take it? So we can fast take it and done that.
Well, right now we're waiting on paperwork, but also I've started.
Done it.
Oh, he's done it. Tom, that has done it, I'm, I'm.
Because we can't tell people this is your option and then it's not really an option.
The tractor has caught on fire, we got insurance working on it, we have a burner for a month, right now working on it.
It, would they wait four months on insurance? Well, that's true.
When you get a driver, that's what you, you work on, you know.
We've got our final.
They, they worked on it and they came back to the motor firm, I think, too, it, it.
But that, that doesn't prohibit people from, we can still take the debris. We just are not burning it right now because of the climate that's been down. Okay, so we can still take the debris, that's, that's not, we have, we have, we have to store it.
So we need to make sure that the public and, and all the workers at the landfill have a map that this is where the incinerator is and these are the seeds at the incinerator. And you can go and take it there during these times and so that, you know, we're, we're got all our stuff in our rucks. We'll get that done.
Which, don't you need to have this incinerator that I've done, the paperwork needs to come a foot or a side?
Um, so that the people be on, um, that.
Okay, come on, well, you're gonna have.
Yes, sir.
I want to show them that one first.
I think you have. So because, so we have to come from, or we're talking June month eighth before we can actually, um, you know, have this in operation, you know? Okay, so between now and then, if that's what we're gonna do, what, what do you need to do? What do you need to do?
I don't know, I guess do what she's been doing since, since then, I don't agree to, I don't know.
Let me put my hands on the ordinance and then determine where we are with that and then we will, we will take the appropriate steps to put everything into operation that we need to do. And I'll always happy to reach out to Ms. Faulkner and.
Have a workshop next week.
Yeah.
You can advertise for a special meeting, go to workshop or access, adopt each thing.
Yeah, that's, that we can, thank you.
Well, see, what we're going to have, you know, we got all the, so we can go fourteen dollars for the, for a month.
How good's that list of letting the incinerator, what type of.
Get together. Look, we've been at this shop, we'll take this, this, okay, so.
I think the, I don't, I'm not sure what the charge was, more than you know, I think it's.
What's it? Four, four dollars?
Four point nine.
Yeah.
For two.
Okay, all I'm saying is, you know, we've, we've, I've been with three years, we've been working on it. Get the incinerator running, buy the trucks, you need the trucks, so, you have a bad one. County with the big, you know, that's one truck that stops the operation.
That's what I feel about that.
It has, it has to stop.
It has to stop the burning, we're still thinking, well.
There's something wrong if the, if everybody coming here don't understand that, something wrong. Even we might tell them newspaper could have.
We, we haven't put it in there yet, or, we haven't even got staple work for this yet, on the incinerator. There's not a person been out there yet.
Okay. How long has the incinerator been?
Two, maybe three years.
And it hasn't worked since we had.
Yeah, we've been burning every, all the time, yeah. Well, we're gonna pull from the roll-off site, we haven't had a public coming there yet, no public people. Only want to come in and, hey.
Okay.
For public.
So we gonna now let the public bring their.
On credit, right, we don't, we don't go ahead and store it.
We just need to get our hands on that first ordinance and we will put it into operation.
Okay, yeah, that's a problem.
Okay, what I, what I want to see is at our workshop next year that we've got this laid out from beginning to end, so that we can decide on it and on June month eighth, that we vote on something and put it in place and that we're prepared so that the public knows, probably through the newspaper, and each law should have a handout or a sign, ad hoc poster, so that people clearly know what our, call the if. And if they come up there with, um, now, wait a minute ago. If they come up there with a refrigerator and a stove, that can't be burned out there, so what are they gonna do to the back?
They do, I mean, we.
They can't wipe it in our.
So we're still gonna take it, they just, they're gonna pay for it per this general.
If, if you guys adopt that, it's.
Uh, uh, so I mean, I want to, I want to consider this on June month eighth. So what I, what commissioner gets, we've been kidding, commissioner, we've been kidding, stand down, those long, long time. But I think that we're getting very close to putting something in a place that's good, if you agree.
I agree.
Okay, that's down the road.
Maybe I've been doing it in workshop.
No, but what I want to do is that the workshop, we have it all laid out and start with this. And on June month eighth, we're gonna vote on something and we're gonna, um, we're gonna, um, end this, right? And everything's on one, that's great, right?
I hope, I hope, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think, hold on, listen to this, March, and then all we do this.
Uh, March, obviously, of course, March, uh, obviously, I don't know what happened, this one meeting, uh, but I do remember we did it one day and thinking about, if it proves the ordinance on allowing contractors to go to the incinerator site, um, you do not approve the fees for that and that's what we need to approve.
Off we go. That's right.
July.
That's right, what I'm saying, that's right, getting in. That's right, what I'm saying, that's right, getting it in, I'm like, now, I'm in the workshop, so we're gonna do a lot of help, we're taking care of everything in turn.
I left, called my office, found out what paperwork has been done, my secretary's trying to look it up on the computer and see what we've done or what we haven't done.
Okay, thanks.
I hope, like I said, you know, we're gonna get to the bottom of where we are, we're gonna get to the bottom of the file.
Yes, we are, we, we're gonna, we're gonna fix this. Pauline?
Uh, should've been saying, never watch, Pauline, I'd say, I wouldn't, but falling ways, always gonna fall, I had to get the landfill set up, and if real interest is growing, also, leave the landfill website and look, uh, Jefferson County, per cap of garbage is about six percent of what ours is, same with recycling, we take metal from roll-off site, we take the green bill, okay, right? Because, where does it go?
It go downtown, really.
Where?
Part downtown.
But anyway, that, there's a lot of free recycling, like I know in twenty counties, on fifty fifty three, there's a big side, that, um, the green recycling center, that's just piled up, you think it's gotta be cleaned out, take it, stuff it around and grind it, that's, uh, regional, uh, places in Yangford, I hear, totally. We need, we need to take leaves for landfill, you know, there's two different sides, forty five hours down there about the green bill, the fall away, you know, the left of these were being new, we pay, we pay, we pay two different sides, anyway, I like that, look, from a big picture, holding up, hauls, leaves, big hatches, the green bill, thanks about that, thanks about that, if nothing happens about it, we could need to figure out a better way, so, and I'll be there, I'll, I'll, I get up here, but we need to look at, with a big picture, free pipe, when they walk again today, and then try to, you know, burn it, it's, it's an option, that you, you can get by, you, you, you stack it and grind it, stuff it around, make it a little PC, or, or freezing yourselves, you got it, it'll buy, you know, but.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There is a lot of this, haul, uh, grind, wood chips, and process, two things, uh, and, and.
I, 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 I've sorted that, I, I've.
You did.
Worked in wood chip and job fruit, and it's got nothing to do with.
Okay, let's just say that.
Okay.
We talking about that, and I think that's what we need to do, if we got wood products, we don't need to.
All that's.
Win, a hard one, then we got other things that we're taking, the Green, Gangville Regional, you know, the decade of.
D T S.
Another thing we got, I don't know why we set up the forty-four thousand dollars a year, we give back to Dick's County.
But that wasn't supposed to be.
Wasn't supposed to be.
That was supposed to be two years and get set up.
All right, we need to take it back, we need to walk back.
Still all that.
The citizens of Taylor County and other counties, help, that Greenville, the, the written laws, the race laws, you go over the landfill, they don't need to be burdened with all the people, pop, everybody needs to own the lease.
Then you got the.
What do we need to do?
You got the.
Walk back from that contract.
You got the state county, oh, they can't, uh, they can take litter, that's the volume and scale, it ought to be cheap for you enough, but anyway, a big problem, there isn't many of these, it's regional landfill, regional landfill, to be efficient, I tell you, I don't, uh, the robbery that started, you run, that's all that's left, you looking for a new attorney, that right? This, anyway, just look at all the regional landfill website, and you can, you can do a lot of, and they, they're available per county, just a sample, what's the per cap of, use the fall away, to go to, to also, and we went to Yangford, so, hell, they got to know the plan, the reason why, and the robbery they said, the sheriff's probably wanted part of that, person, or something, but anyway, this is a law, I mean, it's just something, you know, it's been all, really, they, they.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
An ordinance to the Lord of County Commissions, the State of County Department, and contract consistency, the A C, to dispose the vegetation for a tree debris at the county incinerator site, providing proceeds, be set by resolution, providing several building, providing effective debt, that's the ordinance that I prepared, and it provides for that, and it provides that you set the fee by resolution. So, set the fee.
That's what the D E C is.
You set the fee, and, and.
So, that's, we can talk about that, that's.
This is back in, this is back in May.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll talk about the C M thirty, and then, uh, June month of eighth, we'll.
Approve the resolution.
We'll, yeah, I mean, think of everything that we need to do to fix this. And a workshop and one meeting, I think.
There's a, there's a timetable, Gary talked about one time, you couldn't let it sit on the yard out there, but certain enough time, right? And, and the D E C, they, they want you to rotate that out, we're selling linen on that, and we can, we get this thing up and running, we'll be fine. Now, on our debris, now, like King Hattie and all that, we, we call that, for the incinerator, we call all the wood debris, only debris that goes to our shovel, if it's contaminated, and what that happens is, somebody comes in at night, and contaminates the containers by going, when they're going through the mess, you get, you know, drugs, whatever, they're getting out of the garbage, they'll contaminate the limbs then, so, that's the only time we go over there. Now, on the grinding part, when the hurricane came through, we set up the seeds Friday then, with, with the county, we ground everything they had down, I think, we could take it to Gangville and all that, to get it, we took a sample over there, and they rejected the whole thing, so we grounded all that for no reason.
Why do you think we did?
Instead of, not that they burned it, too dirty.
Oh, no.
So, we grounded the whole thing, Sam Boyer was down there, it's expensive, people hated, but it was, uh, they, they rejected everything he took, so I had to take it out to the incinerator, had to haul it out there, to, uh, let it sit and dry out.
Did you find out from them what they were saying?
They were really particular on what they said, Steve did, he, he said he was in all the shadows, they're back on there, they just, they rejected everything he took.
Wow, now, what we're talking about, this will fix the problem and King Hattie, right? About that call from people down there, that, you know, with their C M D, you know, their component, their, their stuff where to take it, and they don't wanna drive some King Hattie to, to Greenville, and I was blaming them, that's, 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 um, just not practical.
And others?
So, but this will take care, and they can lift, uh, it'll be, uh, public that they can lift, uh, dumpster, and then we'll, we'll deliver it to us.
We don't.
I would go, waste, waste.
We live forever, we're always.
Waste pile will do that, and then they negotiate, well, waste pile, what are, waste pile.
They handle all that.
Okay, okay. Just for the board's information, um, I believe, I recall now, why we had not asked for the resolutions to be adopted as of yet, because the rate schedule is within the rate schedule that we brought to the board, I think back in the end of mayor's noon, so the vegetative debris rate schedule is part of this, this schedule that we presented to the board. So, I think in the discussion of whether we prepay, or whether we issue an invoice, or how we're going to, how we're going to address the rate, is why we have not asked our attorneys to draft a resolution as of yet. So, maybe what we need to do, is if we're not ready to move forward on a rate schedule for, for, um, our citizens, or for our roll-off site, that the boards can give some direction on the vegetative debris rate, that, that you want in the resolutions to come back to the board at first meeting in July.
Yeah, that's, I wanna let all of that out, my, my, all, okay.
One, if you, if you come, I mean, to, uh, Gary has, uh, called me, you need to, uh, season tickets for people to pay, and they got thirty days to pay it, he says, why if you have ten of those that don't come in and pay, then you gonna have to suspend their usage until they pay the freebies ticket. Said somebody sent out the coordination, had it at the roll-off site, said, no, he got a ticket, that he's got a five trailer of garbage, and it was thirty-five dollars, and he didn't pay.
Well, I think that's what management, uh, you know, you could provide that to the site, to all of them, so then they go from one to the other, and, and the roll-off attendants shouldn't have to be the one to argue with them, call Gary, give yourself on over there and talk to you.
Wouldn't it, Gary, wouldn't it fall away, you there, and people have an argument, I think, about it at times? Well, I'm open to anything, I, I think, I think it's gonna be, when we first initiate, it's gonna be a little painful, going, you know, when we cut the hills down, now that was, I think it's gonna be a learning process as we go through this, we may have to, but, you know.
People might have had a period there for a few weeks, but people need to get a book, it's in a, we put some newspapers, or a week, you got to go get your tickets for a trailer, and, or whatever, uh, I've cut out a lot of them, not worried about them paying, if they pay, I mean, all of that's a good.
Well, if he got Pam's ass, that that person has got a day off on Saturday, and they had a tree to fall, and the tax collector's office is not open for them to get a prepaid permit, and that's the only day they got off, and the next week, then they need to get that disposed of while they're off, and it's not available on the tax, to get that prepaid, that's the only thing that I, I agree with.
And if they come up with a market trailer, the roll-off, and it's, I have to.
Well, hey, if, if they don't pay it, who, the, the, then it's not, well, nobody, well, you, you want not paid, you know, you have.
Deal, that's a deal.
When you have to take it, have to look at the list, and say, well, what's your name? You're not on this list, I mean, that's.
Well, and that was required, I think this is the discuss, discussion we had previously, that's going to require everyone that goes to a roll-off site with a trailer to show identification, and then, and then it would have to take that, you know, the list, you know, it's supposed to be doing that anymore. No, ma'am, they, they give us an I D card.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have a name on it. That, that, I think, the discussion we had previously, which led into the discussion of prepaid, you know, if we need to ask people to prepaid for this, the only other, I, I don't know if we could require citizens to pay by check at the time, and we just won't, will not handle cash, I know people, a lot of people don't even have, they don't even deal with that anymore, because it, they're obsolete.
That puts the roll-off attendants on the, so they have to set up, and I don't think there should be any exchange between the roll-off attendants and money check, what is, you know, that's not what they're, they're doing, my opinion.
You know, I gotta tell you, your ordinance provides a necessary payment.
I think what it's, uh, no, it's a qualified ordinance, because I don't think it's correct. I think our qualified ordinance does refer to that, but if I'm not mistaken, that ordinance was actually, I don't know if it was repealed or not repealed, but I think our question is, is that ordinance still in effect or not, that identifies the limits of payment.
Okay, well, we need to look at that, Gary.
Right.
Okay, you talked about qualified ordinance, you know, municipal code for writing, qualified out ordinance, the value of the ordinance, you know, with an ordinance number on it, and they make, every once in a while, they come back and, and look at it, and, and then try to, to put it in the code, and this, what this said, now, I'm gonna read what this said here, um, uh, and then we got to look at what was subsequent, okay, if there was something that says, necessary payment, these for disposal of construction and demolition debris have been collected at the roll-off site by the attendants on due, at the town disposal, because of the variable nature of the volume and types of materials, there will be no charge account or annual permanent issues for construction and demolition debris, payment may be made either by cash or check, now, this is back a while back, and then it says, rate schedule, which is a very net, meaning this is ordinance number two thousand one thousand eleven, and, you know, twenty years ago, or eighteen years ago, rate schedule, the director of sideways has prepared a schedule of speed for the disposal of construction and demolition debris, based on the type and volume of the material to be disposed, board county commission, uh, sets the rate schedule annually by resolution. That's what was planned, you know, before anybody was on the board, that can be, okay, but I'm going to write, I wrote the ordinance, pursuant to the board's instructions, but that's a particular time, now, times change, you know, times change, um, uh, not only that we're gonna have such a problem with, with, um, roll-off attendants, um, collecting money, you know, nobody thought about that, um, so what needs to be done is, if we haven't amended it, then we need to amend it, just like, um, our chairperson was saying, Gary, but what needs to be done too, is when you have a question, when you have a question, first thing you need to do is go to the ordinance, and then the second thing you do is, is call the administrator, she'll call me, or you'll call, you call me, so we can be consistent on what we're doing, and where the citizens, where, you will know what, what, what you can do, what you, and I'm gonna say this too, y'all might not like this, with regards to construction and, and, uh, and debris, you know, what we're talking about right now in the, in the incinerator, you've got the incinerator ordinance, you just don't have a fee schedule, so conceivably, I could take my stuff out there for free, right, until you get a fee schedule. Why not? You see what I'm saying? To help you, and to help the other contractors, now, you might not like that one, Gary, and tell them why you don't like it, but that, you know, I mean, we're in a situation where we're trying to get this straightened out, are y'all following me?
Yeah, now, here's one thing I'll recommend, from what he just said, let's get that fee schedule, a recommendation by next person, and we'll have a special meeting, and we'll go ahead and adopt, something, we don't need to leave that hanging out there, no more than we can, than we have to, that needs to be fixed, A S A P.
We also need to fix how they pay it, and that would have to be by amending, if we haven't already done so.
That's right.
If we haven't already done so, and understand that, you know, that, that the period of time I won't be gone, you know, from July the eighth until July the fifteenth or something, I told y'all about that, the twenty you'll be here, the dog's be gone, structured, you know, twenty years you get that done, for the practical matter, and I've already written down the resolution on the incinerator, I don't wanna do that, but I'm gonna leave the fee blank, okay? We still have to do this ordinance that regarding that, with regards to the incinerator.
So, firstly, we have to, um, we have to decide how we're gonna, how do people are gonna pay, if it's through invoice, uh, it seems like that's not still free, that's not public, but it, it seems like right now, that that might be our best option, and as Gary said, let's see how it works, and, and then, we may have tweaks, you know, it's certainly, if we find something that can be done about money, then, um, it would be imperative that we fix it, and, uh, but we gotta start somewhere, and weren't you bringing this in?
It, it was started one year ago, I, I'm consistent with mine, thought my thing this morning, the list she had kept all these years, of the, of when they had that year ago, and she was on and on about.
She called me too, Danny, and.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, um, you know, it's the day of today, and we're trying to do what's right, right for the day.
One, one other thing we need to add into this, and, and, and Gary, you backed me up on this, those cords get passed along my clay door, at the dump.
Yeah, they do.
It needs to be a window sticker, stuck on the window, stuck on the bunks, they don't want on the window, and the back glass, like the boat ramp stickers, that sticker needs to be visible, and if nobody don't want, the sticker on their vehicle or nowhere, they don't need to be coming to the dump truck, I mean, that's just, that's just, well, I would got to get a handle on that, so, you got vehicles from all these other counties and I had worked with them, you know, they got, they, they got their, they got their cord, they got straight down there, the cord and some of them, they're gonna get off, and I.
And be serialized.
You, you brought that up.
Like you can do a boat wrench there, and be serialized, just like how you can do a boat wrench.
Right, that's, that's, and you brought that in a long time, and that's something, I hope that our workshop doesn't have much more of the solid waste on the, than at thirty in the car.
But it can have a date on it, too.
It's, it's, I'm sorry, if you said thirty, the workshop is fifty, god, fifty, but, um, if you wanna bring that to the workshop, and let's try to solve what they were all, um, because, you know, it's another thing, they're talking about over and over and over and over, and, um, I mean, you know, we need to fix it.
I think one of the reasons why I didn't set ordinance for the doctor, we got two that I thought was empty here about collecting cash flow, that's why they changed the particular. And so, if it's present in ordinance, it needs to be amended, you know, it's.
We have a time for that.
Yeah, but I don't know what it's been.
Well, this has been kinda painful, but I think we've kinda put handle on, on things, you know, we've come a lot further than we, than we did, and I think we know what. you know, we've come a lot further than we then we did, and I think we know what I'm talking between now and sixty, and then, of course, due on the age. But, um, you know, I I feel like we have more direction than we're headed in, everybody direction. Lisa?
Um, just a thought on the payment, you talking about, uh, going prepaid or picking it up at, or getting an invoice or something, yeah? The dump site. If people won't pay it, will they tax it? Do you really think he's gonna give them a ticket at the dump site and they don't pay? I'm just saying, no, I get what you're saying, but I'm the one gonna go on Saturday with a load of stuff that I didn't have time to get a thing for. But to be sure people pay, my thought is, it needs to be prepaid.
Well, nothing is is, uh, full proof.
Right.
And, um, you know, we're trying to start somewhere, and if that if that doesn't work out, then we need to come back and and see how we need to tweak it. But we have to have a starting point.
Right.
And I don't know, um, workshop may be missing, that may be the sign what the, that may be what the board is.
I just thought of saying my thought.
But it's an option, and I'm sure that we'll we'll be discussing it on sixty. But, um, again, that's got, that's got, um, room for error and.
Right. That's what I'm saying, you can you can please everybody, but, or or maybe you could have, where, I mean, if it's the dump on Saturday, if somebody comes, you can get a invoice for that. But for the most part, just have it prepaid, but just not on.
Well, you know, I'm thinking of taking it to our beautiful wood and dropping in the wood.
But anyway.
We don't, we don't want that to happen. Mark?
Um, not 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 looking too near, I'm kind of, I've been wrecking my brain out eventually up, um, incident fifteen. But I believe it happened, talking about the two thousand one ordinance and and researches that were already there, and, um, I don't remember what year it was, I believe it was probably before any of y'all were on the commission, this page would have been here to be to be, I mean, this is so bad. Um, but when when the commission raised the assessment to one forty from wherever it was before, it was one twenty, one twenty-four, one seventeen? And and as part of that, they stopped charging for regard debris and everything else.
That was maybe two thousand.
And you pay one forty, you get everything. And that was a decision the commission made at that, um, um, but that's why you have something in your ordinance that you're doing something different.
I see.
Um, that was a decision made over ten years ago.
When the board says, if you're gonna have it through, give them a ticket. So if you put on that ticket, so if you fail to pay this ticket, you will not be allowed to dump by favor of those until it's paid. There's got to be some order on there that gets there. Yeah, and you know, that must be, there is one restaurant in town that used to, when you went through the drive-through windows, there was a list up there. These people have given out a bad check, and we will not pay their check again. They're gonna be, you saw everybody, they have sent me that restaurant, they've given a bad check, but then you put time, there's big people are not paid there, they cannot dump anymore.
You could put it in the newspaper every week, wouldn't you, buddy?
But anyway, and and please, uh, commissioners, if you look at the information provided by Gary and by, anyway, a lot of these, most summers, they pay for their C of D and their annual fee is more than a hundred and forty. We're only one more county has a hundred and forty, like we do in the rest summers. So we need to think about that because here we are, we don't have a tractor, we need a tractor, we probably don't have a motor tractor, but we don't have the money to buy a motor tractor. So we gotta support ourselves, right, Gary?
Absolutely.
We gotta be self-supporting, so we need to really think about that. We're moving on to item two general business. Thank you, Gary.
Yep.
To item twenty-one. The Board should consider adoption of a resolution setting the time for violation of the recreational vehicle or the existing regulations with section four two that six thousand two four east of the code ordinance as the parent of the county attorney. Is there a motion to read the ordinance by the resident, my partner? Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Moon? All members say aye? All the co-tribs signed, motion here.
With this tally, uh, if you look at the draft, it it left blank the time, y'all got to figure out what those are today if you pass the ordinance. I mean, this resolution, you know, someone's playing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, and we gotta figure out the time today? Okay.
Well, how many pass the resolution with?
We need to have a schedule, the law that's doing a recommended schedule for doing that?
No, ma'am, I believe that the suggestion at the, the last time this was discussed, that it it be as high as as three hundred dollars. Um, and that was, I I don't know that there was really a recommendation, it seems to be a wide range of of feelings about how much that that, um, violation should be.
Okay, okay, then after this, we read that order by my partner, then we'll have discussion about the fee, then we'll come back and and vote for an offer.
Okay, all right. It's up to, y'all both on race and agree. With the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of the county of the code ordinance pursuant to section two at one twenty-six feet of the code ordinance, which permits the board to set a fine amount for violation of the code, instead of resolution setting a fine for violation of the identity regulation to section forty-two, six fifty-two, four A of the code ordinance setting an effective date.
Thank you.
And it's got, what it's got in, it's got a blank for the first violation, like, um, 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 that was suggested, um, by Commissioner Page. In other words, as y'all recall, he suggested a a fine for the first violation and then a a fine for second, or for the subsequent violation. And that's why it's like, it's a fine for the first violation and one for the subsequent violation.
Okay. So tell me the process. Is it that they get a one per, the one one, how many, what is the process?
Our process is that if there is a complaint of multiple RDs on a parcel, our code enforcement officer visits that parcel and and then does the research to see if that is indeed a violation and then leaves a letter or or mails a letter, giving them a set number of days to contact code enforcement. After that, then an additional letter is sent, giving them, I believe, it's like thirty days, to remove the RDs. If if they are not in compliance, then we, from what I understand, we schedule a hearing with our hearing officer. And our hearing officer, special magistrate, makes a decision on any punishment as far as moving RDs. Now, technically, people will move their RDs, but the complaint from residents of some of these communities has been that it takes too long for us to, um, persuade people to move RDs that are not in compliance as far as it is to the ordinance. So the suggestion was that this would empower our code enforcement officer to actually give them, um, to to fine them for having, for being out of compliance.
Okay, with the first letter, how long do they have before they get the second one?
I want to, well, I think it depends on if contact is made. But if I, I want to, from what I recall, there's usually about thirty days to come letters.
So if I hear a letter, it says, the first letter says, I've got thirty days?
I can't verify that.
So, I mean, we may need to look at the whole process, because if the first letter's due to thirty, then then after that, you get another letter, and it's another thirty days?
Well, this would change the process completely. So we would no longer issue letters asking them to make contact. This would be, this gives us the ability to cite the person who is not compliant, just like our boat wrench site.
Well, no warning, he goes there, he knocks on the door, and he says, what? He goes, what? There's a citation. And and they get a a fine right then for that number of dollars, yes.
And it's to coastal areas?
Yeah.
In the distant coastal areas?
Or coastal high water areas.
Okay.
I don't know about that. I mean, it seems like there should be, not thirty days, but it seems like there should be some.
Yeah, it's constantly a million before it all gets played, if you just keep adding thirty days.
Right, right.
Thirty days, no question.
But that's why we're doing this. That was still, that was my understanding of why the board wanted to pass the resolution, to give us the ability to cite violators of this ordinance. Without going through a warning process or thirty days or and making sure that it's lawful.
That's very, very harsh. Um, you know, it's it's it's, what I'm gonna think about is give them free day. Okay, I'm here, if you don't move it in three days, I'll come back and you will be fined three hundred or whatever it is. I give them three days. Because it could be, it could be that some people think, I'm not familiar with, um, you know, could really, could be anything with that. So I I like to give the benefit of the doubt, but I don't want to give thirty, sixty days or no more than thirty days. I don't know, what do y'all think?
Well, I think a ten-day period would be fair, if you have mail out a day or something like that, and you can take five days to get there. So I think ten days, give them a ten-day limit. And after ten days, if that's ample enough time to be caught, if you haven't responded in ten days, then you're gonna find it, just like everywhere else. But you gotta give the company board the meaning, can't just walk.
I'm not gonna pull that way. If I'm not mistaken, and Danny can help me clarify this, this this resolution doesn't really fill out the process as far as how our code enforcement officer will will give these these citations. It's more to set, give us the ability to write citations and to assign a dollar amount. Wouldn't we still have?
We, our internal discussions were along the lines of seven days or so, because a lot of people are on the derelict end of such a, so they need to be notified. And when you're just looking at it, RB, you don't know who owns or what their address is. So, uh, you know, we weren't looking at just see if there's any violations or nothing, giving them, uh.
Right.
Seven days and then.
Right, I think we should give them, set up their names, whatever.
I'd say days.
And mail them to their address, if it's in Georgia, or wherever, to them a, maybe send a phone letter, also leave a note on their door and something like that, that will go off. So if they're, if they are in Taylor County, that they have, and they don't know that company's more than ten days.
Now, the only one we could send mail to is the property owner, but we don't have any other address.
Yeah, so, but I mean, I want to be fair.
Sure.
You know, it's fair, but yeah, maybe just, you know, you would call, but I, we gotta have them down under the code enforcement officer, just the way it, it's not this, and we just, we're on there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I hope, hey, we don't know who owns it. You know, when the house told somebody, he knows I'm coming, definitely, you know, and that, you leave and all this stuff.
We gotta make a property owner is, that we don't necessarily.
It's that tag, it's that tag, and that RB, it's RB.
We don't have the ROEs in trade status.
Wouldn't a property owner be on, and they're part of me?
Yeah.
Listen, now, we just, I'm telling you, next stop, you'll give you a file on a dollar ticket within two and a half minutes. Am I right, Mr. Chair, something?
How fast are you going to get a five hundred?
We don't have the same ability to search that information as law enforcement does. So what we have to search is the property record and see who the owner of the property is, and that's who our communication is with. And I believe that the assumption is, is the property owner controls several properties, and if the property owner is allowing multiple RDs and is not in compliance, then the property owner receives, says I paid for it.
Okay, so. See, this is a lot of tag, you all these tax collectors with that bad number, one hundred dollars. If it's an out-of-state tag, that's not strong. Because I could do that same thing with boat wrenches. And I'm connected with the Georgia, the, uh, highway safety people. I put the list of categories that Georgia numbers, I send them to big girls up there, and they two hours back. Who would be the owner is or airhead is?
I'm on the deck. I'm on the deck.
Okay, I send it email, and they send back that value, they have some of them there.
I always, I would, if they don't even have tag on, you know, we can't, we can't do this.
Well, that, if you don't have a tag, it's already out of, all right.
But, you know, we, we talked about this last night, about suggesting a ton of it, because if there's no tag on, how are we gonna find it? But it's, what if I was on the next one, and a storm comes, and it blow all those trailers into my house? And who could I argue that help me out on that, with no paper?
I would, if you put that burden on the property owner, the property owner gets the fine, the pay for she is the owner that has read and allowed them to occupy that space. So there, I think there's responsibility to make sure that their people know, are bored, and so I think the fine should go to the property owner. So I would just.
That's exactly right, but you, that's that's most easy, you know, here, if people rent a lot on their property, if these people have got four or five trailers on there.
And they pull them in here, they don't know, but the property owner knows, I'm sure of that. So I think we should give a ten-day warning, and then after ten, ten-day warning to the property owner. And after ten days, in that period, you take, then after ten days, your fine will be what? What?
If they's up there, if they's, can't get our thing to make a difference.
All right, what do you think?
Hey, I'm telling you, ten minutes after I'm full, I have a code already that is mine made up.
Okay. I make additional parties. This takes me the first time, five hundred dollars to pass. You had, uh, one, two hundred, fifty dollar fine, working it out.
That's a good one.
In the law, this where we, um, you know, we had time, uh, we got foreclosed, we got appeal, and South couldn't sue the county and all of us for a hundred million dollars, because we got two guards, and one of his, and physicist, and assessed a fine of a hundred twenty-five dollars for, um, you know, for violation, only he had two, two sets of violations. I'm not, I'm just saying, there's a warning there with regard to setting fines with respect to, because it's been a Supreme Court case that I assessed a fine. I don't think that our hundred twenty-five dollars would make sense of fine, you know, on that. Fact of the matter is, um, you know, we, we, when we foreclosed, we limited it, you know, y'all recall. Now, it's set for sale and, uh, we filed a motion to stay the, uh, the sale. Whether that be granted or not, I don't know. Um, so be careful on the amount of what you, what you, what you say. Um, I can, I can give you the suggestions, if you want me to, I won't unless you tell me.
I would, if you think, if you think of five hundred is a dollar, then you should give us a budget.
I don't think it's an endorsement, but I, I just think that, um, I'll tell you what happened, and I'm gonna tell you what happened in horse shoo-dee. When you had an RD, you were supposed to come and register at, at, um, town, uh, town protocol. And and the reason they did that was because they wanted to know how to get in touch with people to remove those if there was a storm coming, okay? And so they set the fine fifty, they they set the fee at fifty dollars to register and then a fine of like a hundred dollars or something. Boy, we had a roomful of people, ridden and talking about fifty dollars. They just, they they were going crazy, so the board repealed it, repealed it. Um, uh, so whatever you do, you're willing to get a backflow on that, um, as a practical matter, regardless, you are, I'm just, I'm just giving you, you know, experience on that. So now we don't have to live down in horse shoo-dee, so when a storm's coming up and it blows away an RD that somebody's house, it's gonna be, you know what to pay. Because, again, that's another reason why we did this other one, because. Because, again, that's another reason why we did this other one, because, uh, for the good of the entire community, right? You know, or what, so, um, my suggestion, well, I'm not gonna suggest it, you know, that's y'all's job.
Well, we're asking you to...
I gave one, we have four more board members.
Okay, ten days, ten days. But it's kind of like, I suggest two fifty, second at five hundred, but it's merely a suggestion, I need to do it anyway, okay?
Well, I want my attorney, I'm, I'm asking you to start with your...
Well, that's what we want to do, but how many others do we have?
Hundred, two hundred.
A hundred and two hundred.
Hundred and first, that's good. An acceptable.
And that's a day, or, or...
For violator, violator.
For violator.
Violator.
So, the total amount they could be fined is the combination of the first violation and one subsequent?
No, any subsequent. In other words, this, this is just, this is just fine, you know, you're giving them a check when they, you know, they pay the check.
So, it's a hundred dollars a month, and each one subsequent to that, it's two hundred dollars?
They really, the same, the, the same, um, the same property owner has more of the RBs on there than is, than is, um, uh, required by, by the ordinance, and you need a two hundred dollars.
Do you want to add any numbers? A per, per...
I didn't say, I didn't even say per, I just said that's a violation. Now, what you need to do, if you want to get more specific, then you don't need to pass this resolution today, if you need to decide if you want to be more specific.
I think that's the question, I don't know. What, where's the form?
How, what happens if you give them the ten day warning, and they get the check? And they remain, they remain there for another, cause they thought, since last another week, right? They stay there during that time, what kind of enforcement do you want? That if they don't, is the county gonna pick them, the driver driver up and leave it somewhere or what?
That wasn't addressed, yeah, it wasn't addressed, it wasn't, what was addressed was the fine and the hope that, that if I got a ticket, I'm gonna need it off. In other words, it's trying to be liberal, but as much as possible with respect to this, because there's a pile of them down, down there. And, you know, uh, there's a pile of them everywhere, it's not just, you know, the town, I'm saying, you know, like, that.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
If, uh, if we did give you a citation and they refused to remove after that, I don't know why we should not then take them to a hearing officer or request a daily fine, until it's due, come to comply.
Unless the ordinance says so, a daily fine, we'll just be, that's...
Well, that's, that lets us do the present of a hearing officer.
I don't know if that's the case. Here's what would happen, here's what would happen. For instance, okay, so they didn't pay the fine, goes in front of the, the hearing officer where they can contest the fine and say that, say, I don't want to pay the check, okay? And hearing officer says, you gotta pay the check, or there's a lien, you know, I am a disorder, which will be a lien, it could be a court. Same situation you've got, and you're okay. Right, you following me? Here's a scenario, here's a scenario, here's a scenario, okay? Alright, I've got an RB on there, too many RBs, I've got one, too many RBs on my property, right? Okay. Code enforcement officer comes back and says, Tom, that, you've got too many RBs, you need to move the lien ten days, that's what you're trying, that's what you're gonna tell the code enforcement officer? I'm stubborn, I did not move it. So, I come, the code enforcement officer comes back and says, here's your check. A hundred bucks, a hundred dollar fine, you can pay the fine at the court of office or wherever you're supposed to pay the fine. I'm hard headed, I'm not gonna pay this, I don't mind, I don't want a hearing before the hearing officer, okay? So, set up a hearing officer, and the hearing officer says, Tom, I'm stubborn, you got to pay this hundred dollar fine. And if you don't pay the fine, it's gonna be a lien, because this ordinance, I mean, this order is going to be a lien. And it's gonna be recorded, and a certified copy of it's gonna be recorded, and then, when I decide I want to sell that lot, that lien is gonna have, it's gonna be there for twenty years, okay? That's the situation we've got in, in, in the case. Um, it's a simplistic, um, thing, but, you know, I'm sitting there and I'm saying, you know, I was a hard headed rascal and I didn't do that, and now I have, I was gonna have to pay that hundred dollars, because I can't sell my property. I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to give this people a clear price for this property, with purchasing this property without them paying that hundred dollar fine.
Okay.
But interest, you know, but interest.
And after that hundred dollars, what interest can be, I'm always, I was just thinking that if I have a, a property, and I have three, just like three RBs on there, and I'm getting five hundred dollars each a month, that's fifteen hundred dollars. Give it a hundred dollar, um, fine.
And I'm still, and I'll pay it.
And then, because I'm still gonna get fifteen hundred dollars, I'll just get a hundred dollars of it, and then, if I, if, if you, nothing else. And by the end of the month, I'm waiting on a hearing officer and all that, well, I'm collecting about fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, that's, you're a good businesswoman, but what's gonna happen though, see, is if you don't, you don't move, that's a subsequent violation. And that's where the two hundred dollars comes in.
Okay.
What do we got? The county, um, pays the additional money, you don't have to pay a hundred dollars. Kind of, you pay, you pay the enforcement officer an hour to do all this, plus you reduce the charges, the recording fees, or the judge of hand, the certified copy. The enforcement carries over extended, so, a hundred dollars.
Well, it's a hundred dollars plus the extension, when they don't say that. Uh, what do you think?
And what do we need to try to pack, we need to get it, get ours.
It probably needs to say, plus, it needs to talk associated with collection of, of things, um, attitude of...
We can read you, okay?
A hundred and twenty dollars. And we're not done with a hundred and two hundred.
That's okay, you can have that kind of longer.
We're not done with a hundred and two hundred, plus, uh, excessive insurance.
Okay.
And ten days, is that what we're going with? That's what we're going with?
You want ten days between citations? Or you want, and I, I think it's ten days, they get the first...
Yeah, back for that public contact.
Okay, and then after that...
And the fine.
How long is it?
Citation. Sandy, you think another ten days is adequate for us to keep up with everything we need to? As far as tracking, I, I'm asking, I mean, is that adequate?
I can get my fifteen hundred dollars back from that.
I'm not sure I have a response.
So, operationally, if our code enforcement officer gives an initial notice, gives them ten days to comply or they get cited.
Right.
My question between the first and the second citation, do we have a timeframe of what that needs to be before they get to the subsequent citation?
I have heard one.
Do you have any suggestions? Would ten days be adequate, do you think, as far as, um, following up with these cases?
Uh, it makes sense.
Okay.
Does first one make sense or second?
I mean, if you give ten days initially, ten days subsequent, you know, would make sense to me.
That's still a lot shorter than the process that we use now, as far as notifications, you know, scheduling hearings, and, and all the follow up that we have to do. So, you're compressing the time down to twenty days, and then stay in all hearings.
Do you think just look a little bit faster, is that just totally can, no longer, but you, you know, what do you think?
Well, I, I think if we, if we go a whole lot shorter than that, it may be, I'm just worried about the trackability of it. As far as, you know, once I, if we need to give them a second citation three days later, have we given adequate time for this process to be, to be worked through, for our staff and for, for the owner?
I, I don't know, I mean, if they don't pay the fine, I would see a second to the hearing officer and let him take whatever action is necessary.
But I'm asking the time, this, this time between the first fine, the first violation, and the second violation. Are you, it's what I'm trying to narrow it down, what, what the process should be.
Well, then, that's, I mean, you could have done for a third, a fourth, and all that, for sure, you've got a whole month behind you. And then maybe another month that, that's yet, that's called season over, that's like, no, that's not my idea.
I, I mean, it's a scenario.
Right, no, I don't, yeah.
I need to redo this, and, and we're, we're gonna put in here, um, per day, per day, after this, after the, the, um, citation, per day, let me just work on it.
Okay.
One dollar, angle with it.
You've got one thing going, another thing going on and all that. And you got four trailers on one lot, you got four kitchens. And you got four soccer gardens coming out of there too. I mean, that's something I could rid of.
Yes, sir. But, I, I would, we could have, come and expect rather than that, but this is a long one. We've got new law to be covered, like Dale, or can take that. This is a new issue, this is really important to me, because in the storm, in, in coming, we all have been, but we have been sure before that, it was so stories, about all properties that's here today, and they've been trampled, they were horrified. That's also devalued our property in every sense, and then it takes, but I agree with you, man. What they're going to do is, one house, it just took more, and, and, um, big similar, I mean, everyone, but here was so helpless. Well, everyone was very, very helpless. However, it took forever, you are watching, what they will do is play the time. And if you don't pause enough, that third time, in living to others, if they're going to, if they're making so much money. I asked people to visit their homes and see happy and put a bush trailer next to us, and they were staying at the other end of it, while people visited their homes for a whole lot of money. I mean, I can tell you how bad it is, here we are, we get there, a lot of money, that guy was having a shirt, you know, a house is devastated, he lifted it up. I'm walking down my porch and suddenly, I'm looking down to a bush trailer, I'm just telling you, there needs to be some rules about, um, you know, taking neighborhoods and letting these, if people, don't tell them, have, look at where you're sitting, you look at somewhere. If you have toxic cards in your, money, it's just like the traffic ticket, if you get traffic ticket and it's two hundred dollars, you literally throw down. I'm telling you, you have toxic cards or not, when you're here, and every time it's been for enough, so that they get out of there. Otherwise, if they got two trailers on there and they're getting, whatever they're getting, it's a hundred, it's a hundred mil. It's gonna be worth it to them, if that's the only fine, and that's free, that, that's the lien on their property, and sometimes it's real. Thank you, thank, thank you for addressing this. We're always a host of property, and the value of it, we're losing the values of our homes. And we're losing it with the storms, and we're losing it with, with properties next to us being, just, you know, just, they're using it for whatever they want to do. And just remember this, whenever you have a trailer coming in, 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 you have a RB. That RB is allowed to have a lot of line, okay? They also, there's nothing to address the boat trailers. The, the three RBs that were next to us for a long time, and, and finally, you all did something, thank goodness, I think Danny, or, 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 all the people who worked on that. Okay, these floors can have, um, all boats, they won't, right, all the boat trailers, lines up against, not on top of our property lines. And then you can have the cars, you got the trucks, well, you got nothing, vehicles drive, and that, that, I mean, it's, it's a nightmare. It is a nightmare, you need to make a vehicle, they can bring in county vehicles and, uh, RBs out. Now, man, it's all too long, and you're looking down at what looks like a huge boat lot. Thanks, thank you for hearing.
Thanks, thank you.
So, Conrad, I like your idea of a day, a day, day, that, that's a good time to get. So, um, our next, um, meeting, that, uh, whenever you get a day, we'll, we'll, we'll have it, you know? County Attorney Center, I'm, I'm twenty two, county attorney, it's a couple people, make the eye.
This is a reminder, um, we are now in hurricane season, and Emergency Management is sponsoring a Hurricane Prepare This luncheon. It's on June twenty fourth, which is next Monday at eleven o'clock in the morning. We have put out a public notice for this, but if you have not, RSCC, to Christine Anderson, she's asking, um, that we do this so she can get an accurate heads down.
Who's gonna be with you?
It's in the emergency, at the EOC. Um, and I'd also like to read to you a thank you card that we received from Brother Dave Trail, who is the pastor at First Baptist Christian Methodist. Um, you're a Taylor County Board of Commissioners, thank you so much for waiving the vote ramp access fee for our annual Take Kids fifteen days. This ministry to the children at the Methodist Youth Grant in Madison County enriches all of our lives in Christ. You have an important hand in that blessing, thank you. And, um, as you know, last week, um, some of us attended the Board Association of County's annual conference. I would like to take the opportunity to thank the board for giving us, giving me this opportunity to attend and bring back information, um, to our county. There was a Restore Act meeting during that session, I was not able to attend because I was attending a different workshop. But when those minutes are available, I will pass those along to the board.
Can you remember the special reading?
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. That's cool.
And I was at the Restore Act meeting, and it was about, like, rest of, it was just, forward under bridge.
Really?
But they're getting, they're getting, they're getting there, it's just, it's just a long process, just getting there, and then, on.
Well, we'd like an update, that when you, you know, you know, get all the minutes, the, the people on the yard, I'm sure citizens are, um, uh, in residence, kind of know for everything you, thank you. I'm twenty three, commenting, confirming from the public, from non-essential, um, if you wish to speak on something that was not on the agenda, you can come forward, say your name and address, and you have three minutes. Yep? And Phil, if you're quite to thank those on board who are listening to the EOC and willing to help us to carefully prepare so that a lot of us, they, out there, um, we, the residents confirmed earlier, and, and, um, the, the fifteen with the EOC, and, and they, it's truly absolutely clear. They made it absolutely clear, this is Oregon, and, um, this is, and here, that they are willing to help, make a big problem, they cannot help. Certainly, so the destiny is clear. They know the people who, if, um, if it's, um, if it's, if it's an agency that is willing to, um, to do this in, in a way that it is, uh, it's, knows a way to do it so that it is reasonable. There are people that EOC knows, they told us about, and we have spoken with, they can do this very reasonably, and they work all kinds of EOCs and data projecters. And other people can address that. Amazing is, about a hundred people have either written letters like these, or they have called, or emailed, or sent a file, saying that these want to reach us, for, for safety out there. And they have had all kinds of problems. The one family that lived right in the bridge, and they came over and talked to, uh, Mr. Murphy, whenever he was there with the bridge. And there's some husband came and sent a file, and they very moved and sent some money. And just shortly after that, and, and he's got the bridge repaired, and, and just shortly after that, I, I sent a backhand, and I talked to someone over there, and they said, oh, he was just killed in an accident, he was a dentist, he was whatever, the volunteer, you know, and, and, um, anyway, somehow he was killed in a car accident. That family, I know it's hard to say, they didn't help you, it's person... anyway, somehow he was still going to call accident, that family, I know it's hard to say, they didn't tell, oh, here's a person, but they wrote two letters, they wrote two letters. And the one woman came out and the children, with the little children, and they talked to someone, he was there, looking at the bridge, and she, she listened, that they, that kids, grandchildren, a four-year-old, one-year-old, hearing them, they're there. And what happened, they're right at the end of the bridge, people come and they turn right around, and like, you know, it's right there, there's no way to turn around, except you turn around on private property. And people are heading just like we did to the roadblock, these can't turn around on driveway, there's no turnaround at all, they are, this is not acceptable, and it is not safe. When you've got little children playing, and you say, they come back, the bridge is essential, safety is sacred, and it takes destruction blocking the bridge. This one person says, having, uh, it's taking their, these are residents, having a secondary way out, if you lost, they then should, we need emergency care at the main way, it's, it's, it's happening to be to a storm. And this other lady says, we need an escape bridge in case there's destruction blocking the property. And one person said, like, whenever the, um, the water main broke, and you couldn't use that, you know, you couldn't, I'm, I'm just telling you that what we need to do is continue. We gotta see these papers, or, in a beautiful town, but covering with the seal on both sides, and, um, it doesn't require a lot of salt, but the D O T is willing and ready to help, they can't decide how long it's gonna take to get to the bridge. Over five years, it will be maybe ten, and we can't go, this is storm season, right now, foster with, without just, the initial, and, uh, you're there for the people who's been happy to do it, because it's important, lots of their health, thank you, thank you for your help, I like you, this is appreciated.
I'm John Dickerson, four twenty-six, Ranger Drive, um, I also like to thank the community here, they did a good story last, this past Friday, and I think it was fair on all sides. As Dale said, we contacted the D O T in, in, in Lake City, and they have suggested a contractor to me, that the D O T uses all over the state of Florida. They have the equipment to do the job, this there, and I talked to a man over the phone, and he said that he'll write me an email and send the, the information and send some pictures, which I sent, well, pictures. And, uh, after he received it and everything, he said, uh, I can't give you a quote unless I look at the, the, uh, the bridge itself, and he said, and I said, well, and he said, also, we need that, the report which the D O T gave the county when they condemned the bridge and said they can't use it anymore. So, if you want to get any quotes on the bridge, they need that report or copy of it. Uh, I said, well, you can't tell me a firm quote, and in fact, I'm not the county, I'm, I'm just an individual that lives down there and has an interest in it. He says, I said, can you give me a, a wild guess about what it takes? He said, less than fifty thousand dollars, less than fifty thousand dollars. So, I hope that the county will consider them as a possible contractor, they can do the job, so, um, if you can get it on the agenda, somebody, then, then, uh, I'd be glad to help the county in any way that I can, and, so I thank you so much, thank y'all for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got y'all.
Could we get a copy of that gentleman, address them all? Yeah, I can, I can, we'll get it for you.
Yes, they have.
My name is Martin Teeman, and I live at one eight, one forty-three West White Hill Drive.
Did you find anybody out there?
No.
So you're not anymore, so?
Martin Teeman, F D M A here.
Yes, I do.
My complaint is, it's the same song, just a different verse, we need a police substation to help our way, it is imperative. Um, and I, I don't sleep because at three o'clock in the morning, I have people up and down the road on little motor scooters, on A P Vs, they stop in my driveway. Um, and as a matter of fact, they came onto my property now, and they're taking this SIM card out of my cameras that are on my property, and have come in and stolen those, somebody has. And cigarette lefts are left there, I know, we don't smoke, and hardly anybody uses that driveway, do you use my other driveway? I just feel that I'm happy to stand happy to a substation, I am very happy for it, but for us to have to almost cry and beg for somebody to come out and, you know, to be out there and show their presence. Um, I would, I raised my family in Carroll City and Miami area, if anybody knows Carroll City, they know it is not a great place. I felt safer there because I could call the police, and I had two, three cars in my front yard in three minutes, and I just think if, if we can get somebody out there, it would just, you know, we've got the fire station open now, and I don't know why there isn't a little room, if they get a prisoner, why they can't saddle him to the floor so some of the people can transport him, you know, it's just, to me, it would just be a real, real help to have police action after more, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, you talked to the chair?
Yes, and several of the others.
Thank you so much, I think you're welcome. Anybody out there?
Hey y'all, I believe it's back in line, you know, I guess, I hear no, you.
You don't really know, I believe, yeah.
Okay, I have come to ask for permission to shoot fireworks from Hotter Park, quarter fourth of July, it'll likely be Saturday at six, that we want to do it.
Okay, there's a clause now, which you have to go through, not the ordinance, um, our ordinance states, uh, no persons shall be having their possession of set off or otherwise toxic fluids, charged with running fireworks, crackers, completed rockets, or other fireworks or explosives enter from recreational property unless authorized to do so by the board of county commissioners of the county, and have written authority to proceed from the county administrator, and then only after obtaining any permits required by the county, which would be through our fire team. So, the board gives permission to what I'm reading, and then after the permits are obtained and approved, then the county administrator can get written authority.
I have to quit. Are you requiring this now?
Um, they, they, they shot off a number of times before, they, they go through the whole application process, um, so that, they, they'll be, they'll be good to go, that's it. But before we can give them the application, because it's on county property, they've got to have permission before we go ahead and give out.
The second question I have is, do you have liability?
Yes, sir.
That's part of the application process.
I have, I have, oh.
And we, we would have to give permission for Hotter Park to stay open after, after dark, depending on the time.
Well, the, at dark, you're saying, well, you don't know.
It's due on the fourth, on the coming year event, I personally don't have a common with it, it goes through the process, I'm one commissioner outside.
I would be, I think it would be reasonable, it's, it's been wet.
Well, what am I, so, always, Mr. Chapel, we go through that process, and he'll come and inspect for us, and just probably get one at Waterbee's back here Memorial, and he hang down there and check us, and then it was, it's been very dry, but with humidity and stuff coming up at night, he approved it, we had, he never called him, and then went off without his.
Okay, let me just ask you one question, when you do that, just if you did a, like, Hotter Park, um, would any ashes or anything like that come down on boats and houses there? Like, I've heard, I've been on the boat, people have been doing all of their jobs, and I've had complaints with people that, that have their boats get burned, or, or things like that.
From where, I'm, what we're talking about is like, you go down, you know, the parking area on the end, at Hotter Park, over there, back away from the light poles, as far back as we can get. Nick or Appleton there and watch this, most, everything burns out before it ever gets to ground, and whether it's being that far back, away from anybody, I really don't see it as being a problem.
Part of their, yeah, part of their application process is they have to give a site plan, which shows, this is the blast hall radius, this viewing area, so, when I'm approving that, I'm looking to make sure that they can't burn any neighboring property or anything like that, where, you know, they're well within the safety margin. Um, the only other thing I would recommend that you add is, by giving them permission, would be to say that they police up the area afterwards, if there's any unventation in there.
Yeah, we all, we'll play, we'll, all the time you're from there, probably that time.
He brought Austin, that people don't, because.
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have a safety area where.
Yeah, we'll have, Austin.
And so you're gonna take the parking area, you were, you were.
The parking area.
So people then would just, you know, just want to dance, park them down the road, and we would ask that they take up all the trees.
Yes, ma'am, we do, we always do.
And since, since you live in that area, or dump the lights, they should have to clean that behind any of that like this?
Well, we've learned, just to let y'all know, all these tapes and stuff coming with paper, talk, we cut all that off, we don't have that going up and going down, because I don't want to clean it up, gee, gee, it's a hot cleaner. And so that, we don't have a lot of mess, most everything is just the boxes and stuff on the trailer.
Okay, here's the situation, we don't have a next board meeting, so July, it's, next Tuesday, we have a workshop, but we're talking about having a, a, a special meeting that comes so we can vote, so we don't vote at a workshop. So, if this is something that you want to do, you need to get it all in order and have it ready for.
What do I need from you then?
Tuesday, well, I'm.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm asking him already, he just needed to, for you to have, he got one for you, so you're saying it's okay with the permit, and then y'all have to vote on it?
We have to vote on it at, at a meeting, not a workshop.
Y'all can't vote for that?
No. You don't have everything ready anyway.
Pretty much, yes.
The application doesn't give.
It's not on paper.
Permit, it is, application and permit stood this way, doesn't say that they have, um, permission to use facilities, or, or the land. So I can give her a permit saying that all her paperwork is in order, and then the board will come back and say, okay, paperwork's in order, we're allowing you to use it.
And what I need to even?
I think we're set off, I think we're good.
Okay, you'll just get that in our folder, and then y'all, it's not a danger, okay?
I'm like, this, uh.
The ditch, that side of the ditch, yes, I have that for.
So it would be after you're in that board meeting, if you raise in that morning, so it's going to, we'll have to look at the twenty-nine, just make sure you got everything ready, I think.
Okay, so, but I know, I know, they got that covered for you.
Okay, huh, anybody else? Okay, if not, we're gonna go to, um, twenty-four, board implementable hours, Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, ma'am, I got a call, he called us, we had a hearing up there in Justice Department, and he said he's, he was, he's committed for one hundred million dollars. He said he's pretty sure he's gonna win because, uh, from special, get tomorrow's rest, you know, he knows that he's suing for a hundred million dollars, and say he's due five commissions, the other thing is.
Every time he's been sued, um.
Thank you, what's his name?
Brooke, you were there.
Yeah, I know it, but, you know, the name, I hear many names.
Yeah, named Brooke. Been going on for years, he was on my list to tell you that he was gonna sue everybody for a hundred million dollars.
Is there any wrong with that?
Well, what, yes, uh, what's happened is that, uh, the judge issued a foreclosure order, and also set a, a high rate for, uh, property. It's the one where, um, uh, he is, uh, did not, uh, fix the, the house, and also let folks there, and above, there was a hearing before Judge Pauline, uh, when he was up hearing officer, he entered an order, and I never paid it, uh, and then, uh, I was in front of the board, he'll foreclose that, he's done that, he, uh, sued his backing in that, he sued in, he sued me, and, uh, county administrator in Michigan, that was Chris Smith, uh, he appealed the first, uh, we got a summary judgment on his claim, uh, he appealed that, and that was, uh, Chris Smith, he goes premature. Uh, uh, the foreclosure sale is set for July the second, he filed a motion to stay that sale, like I said, I don't know whether that's going to be stayed or not. Um, our position is that we've done everything that we're supposed to do, um, he filed numerous documents, fees, uh, that, that I'm just devil for sure, um, and all kinds of things, we can look at it, it's been, it's been a while, um, we, uh, if it stays, um, uh, he's done an appeal, I'll tell you that it's my, my, my interest in this, um, feeling is that he hasn't done the appeal properly. Um, so you never know what the first official court of appeal is going to do, um, and we will suspend ourselves, uh, the, uh, uh, waiting over that, and if he's due for a hundred million dollars, or, or, uh, notify our, our carriers, um, that's the name of that statement.
Are there, are there any counter?
Well, that's what he's accounted to enough for, um, we, uh, like I said, his foreclosure on that is, we, we gave him rights, because the, uh, because the fine went way past what, what we foreclosed for, um, uh, I don't have hundreds of dollars.
One other thing happens, I'm bringing up, uh, about that aquatic center, uh, they're popping up, they're freezing out, asking, they're wanting to know, tell them that I was living there. And when the question broke this to me, they were saying, and I told them all about the reasons in city, about it, so, swimming pool is called blizzard, they said, well, you're going down to the beach and you, you know, that's swimming water down, if you don't part with blizzard, it's here and say that, that is blizzard, so. They said, if you're on top of the city, you can come on with that, I told y'all, it's pretty bad, it's not. So I thought, okay, well, we'll look at it, and wait and see what, what that, that is.
I love, I don't know if y'all been down there someplace, and also they're working on getting everything done there, to get a camera, somebody's come in there, and I bet one lady called me, she's real anxious, if she, as soon as we get ready to have somebody down, she's ready to move down there, so, so, that's gonna be, we'll, we'll get that thing behind, but she's well, wanting to mow and weed, and off the gate, and on the gate, whatever it takes to, to be able to, to put her down.
How long for the water support to come, ready for the trade?
Probably, uh, um, I think the last estimate I was given was, it can be as much as a couple of months because of some issues we're having with the placement of the utilities. We have underground utilities though presently, but that does not feel like it's adequate to support what's needed for an RV, so we're trying to work through that, all, all of that now, as far as how the utilities will be replaced.
But it's ongoing, working on it, okay.
I feel if you told me, yeah, my, I know you're D T.
Anybody else?
Um, uh, the attorney for, uh, the board with regard to Mr. Lakey's, uh, claim, uh, thinks that he can settle that without having to go to mediation, um, and, uh, I told him I'll let y'all know, and he's always made all dumb, is to, um, negotiate. Um, and, uh, I told them, I'll let y'all know, and y'all, what they all done is to, um, negotiate with them, see what, what their offer is, and, uh, of course, no offer would be accepted until y'all through this, you know, ten months later, so.
I've got three minutes, hey, I'm not my time, yes.
It's a good idea.
But I'm not. Uh, I want to thank the public for coming, or Ted Scott, or Tom, well done, uh, all of you, thank the newspaper, and I appreciate the board, uh, of community work together. And it's my privilege to start with this board, uh, if you're motion, may I join?
Please, there you go.
Okay, I'm a better than they are. Have a good day.